Color.
They usually fold it into paper airplane, I guess, a couple hours of fun.
That or the color on your table.
My husband.
My granddaughter's really good about coloring on furniture, so.
Oh, how old is she?
Three.
Yeah. That sounds about right.
Yep. Yep.
Guess she doesn't like your furniture the way it is, she thought it needs to be more colorful.
Well, I will say the kids are very creative. I'm just glad my wife purchased washable markers, so it's.
Oh, boy.
You know, you can, you know, if you catch it in time, you can wipe it all with a damp cloth, it's really not that big of a deal, but.
Well, that's helpful.
Is this expense and revenue?
Yes.
Yeah. Carter, are you back with us, or?
I don't think he's on there yet.
Nope. Well, we could always get started.
He can pop on whenever he.
Carter is, um, joining us via Teams meeting.
Oh, okay.
They had a new baby on Friday.
Oh, that's.
So.
Do you want the door opener closed or does it matter?
Doesn't matter, if it gets loud out there, you could close it, but otherwise it's fine.
All right. Back to.
Hey, are you guys ready?
Oh, yeah.
All right, ready, whatever you are.
Okay. Well, first of all, uh, thanks for, uh, seeing us today. I have some of my commissioners here, and for the benefit of Amber and Howard, I've got Commissioner Gary Forsythe from Westland.
Hi.
Commissioner Kevin Mullsbury from Algonquin, and Commissioner Carol Bernhard from Bancroft. Uh, Commissioner Brandt wasn't able to make it, and Commissioner Grant, and that also was not able to make it. So a couple things, I'll just, I'll go through my, uh, budget by line number, but I will defer the wage portion of that to, uh, my commissioners to share with you as appropriate. But, uh, starting with that per, the second line number on my budget printout, where it's, uh, thirty-two hundred, one oh three twenty-one. Uh, talks about administration, the military veteran, other help. Uh, that is for the commissioners. And again, that amount has remained the same, I did not make any changes to that. And then if you go to thirty-two hundred, two sixty twenty-one, administration, military veteran supplies, that's my office supply account. I kept that at three thousand dollars, I didn't anticipate any changes there. Uh, the next line under that one, uh, for administration marked other at twelve hundred, I left that as well. That is the account that I typically use for radio, newspaper, advertising, and postage, so that's where that comes from. The meeting mileage at zero three two hundred, four thirteen twenty-one, that's the meeting mileage for, uh, commissioners as well as myself. I reduced that by five hundred dollars or sixteen percent. And that's just based upon the overall previous usage and the percentage thereof, so thought I could save a little money and tighten it up there. Um, going to thirty-two hundred, four twenty-two twenty-one, education and training. I have that listed as thirty-five hundred dollars, uh, that is a twenty-two percent reduction. Um, and that is also based on the changes in the Iowa code with the Iowa Department of Veterans Affairs allowing that, uh, three thousand dollars that we'll have to figure out how to go about redoing that, but that's now, it's been added as a revenue as well. Essentially what will happen is I go to the required training, I submit it through the county, the county addresses it just like they always do. I then take that and submit it down to IDVA for reimbursement back to the county. When I hit my three thousand, then I'm done with that account, that's basically how.
Are you anticipating that thirty-five hundred plus three thousand?
Um.
Because your previous years, you said you'd.
I'm, uh, I'm, I'm projecting that, but I want to caveat the budget with normally, you know, I get that ten K grant from the state every year, but that's a projection, we may not get that ten K in the future. There's been some legislative proposals that have been projected.
Yep.
That have not been solidified yet. So I can't count on just assuming I'm gonna get that ten K automatically. I projected, but they said for the purposes of your budget.
Do you have that, is that the three thousand you have on the revenue side later on, I'm, I'm kinda skipping ahead here?
The, the three thousand is actually what's been allocated, uh, from the Iowa Department of Veterans Affairs, and that is separate from the ten thousand dollars that I would normally apply for.
Okay, and the only reason I'm asking that is because if you're spending it out that line item and then anticipate the money to come back as a reimbursement, we'll still need to account for it as an expenditure on that side.
Absolutely.
So you're only expecting to spend five hundred dollars over what they paid?
Anticipated, yeah. And I'm just, I'm just talking basic, because I don't know what some of the high cost of livings are now. This next conference is in Kentucky. Um, vastly different in terms of price for motels and things like that as compared to Denver, Colorado. So I, I, I'm kind of estimating there by five hundred bucks. And that's, that's the reason why I had that listed.
I was just making sure you weren't expecting to spend sixty-five hundred.
No.
No.
No, 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 no. Um, underneath that, for the services to veterans at thirty-two ten, two thirty twenty-one, I have accounts there for, uh, food, rent, and, uh, utilities. Those were all previously at eight hundred dollars, I'm asking for consideration to a thousand. That would allow me to basically plan accordingly to take care of two families if they need it with a max authorization of five hundred dollars. Before I would have the account empty and before I would have to request any amendment to the budget regarding that. The other thing is, I did the same thing with requesting back, uh, going back to my previous burial account of, of going back to four thousand instead of two thousand, because again, that will allow me to bury two veterans if, if we need to. Um, the next line item number thirty-two ten, three ninety-one twenty-one, uh, thousand dollars for grave markers, that remains the same, I've not made any changes in that. Thirty-two ten, four thirteen twenty-one, the meeting mileage, that's actually the transportation of veterans, the fuel for the car, uh, as well as the maintenance, and the car is still relatively new. And so I thought with respect to the fuel, because we're not transporting as much as I was previously, I could probably reduce that, so I've reduced that by fifty percent just based upon the current usage and, and what it has been in the past. Telephone portion of the budget remains the same, I know that's kinda covered by IT as well. Um, if you go to the next page, that wraps up that utilities that I was talking to you about along with the rent and food for the veterans. The next item thirty-two ten, six thirty-two twenty-one, data processing equipment. I left that alone as well at nineteen hundred. Got a fair amount of, uh, payments with the color copier and black and white, and then the fax and, and, uh, the computer itself. Then the, uh, the last account, the thirty-two ten, six thirty-five twenty-one, motor vehicle. Again, because the car is relatively new, I thought I could save five hundred dollars, I reduced that down to two thousand. Again, that's the actual maintenance for the car. Your standard tire rotation, your oil changes, maybe, uh, you know, take it in once or twice a year to get it cleaned up really good and polished, but outside of that, it's in pretty good shape and has a little miles, so I don't see at this point having a large maintenance account for that vehicle at this point. Um, based upon those projections, and again, uh, looking at, uh, the totals, my current budget that I'm currently under, I'm at a hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars. If my proposals get accepted by the board, I would be at ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred thirty-six dollars. I would be approximately eight point seven percent below what I'm currently operating at, and it would be a reduction of give or take around ninety-three hundred dollars. Now, I'll turn it over to my commissioners on the wage. Subject to your questions on anything. Sure.
Do you have any questions for Dan?
Hey, Carter, can you hear us? Carter?
No worries. Um, so as you know, I'm Carol Bernhard, one of the commissioners, and, um, before you, you do have, uh, Director Green's, um, evaluation for the year. Um, we, uh, so one of the things that I just wanna bring to your attention is Director Green, um, is the expert VSO. He has, um, been an expert for a couple of years now. He helps and assists and mentors other, uh, veteran service officers in other counties so that we don't get the veterans coming to our county and requesting services. Um, he is part of an organization, um, as an educator, and, um, he exceeds the standards in that respect. Uh, additionally, he, um, takes care of the veterans in this county, so much so that while we've had a drop in the number of veterans, uh, the GDX report that we get actually shows that our, we have an increase in benefits and monies that come into Casoot County, um, during the last year, it has gone up again even though the number of veterans has, there has essentially dropped. And that's all due to Dan reaching out and finding those veterans and helping them get their benefits. We understand, as commissioners, we do understand the, the, the county's need for, uh, budgetary constraints. Uh, we're simply asking that he be considered for a four percent, uh, raise in pay along with the, uh, I guess it's a, similar to the, the board's recommendation for other supervisors in the, um, in the county. So, and that's kind of, I can't say enough about Director Green's, um, job performance. We do an evaluation on that every year, take a look at what he does. We're there every month taking a look at, you know, what's coming in, what's going out, he's a very good steward of the monies. Not once during the last five years, I think it's been, uh, has he actually needed to use county funds for the, for veterans, he has found state and federal funds to help those veterans receive their benefits. Does anyone have any questions for me? Or the other commissioner? Well, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you for your work as well.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions for me?
No. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Josh, can you use that as, as evaluation?
Yeah. If you wouldn't mind signing that, then I'll give it to Donna. I can always get it there.
I have something to please sign, and how many people are in waiting just a second?
No, no worries, no.
It's the fourteen.
So you're not seeing an ambulance budget in your folder because Phil has not finished one yet. I, there is, uh, thank you.
I brought some handouts.
He did, and I did put a blank one in your packets, um, in your, or not packets, in your board folder, there's a tab called ambulance, the blank budgets are in there.
What does that have, or is it? Is that one on our desk?
For ambulance, no. He hasn't, he hasn't completed one yet.
What did I put in there?
You put something in ambulance, probably wrong category.
Oh.
Non-departmental.
So I saw ambulance service right there. Under the.
That explains it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, you put one.
You wanna leave one for Carter, yeah, he's on Teams.
First one I handed out was the projected revenue sheet. This is, uh, what I have so far for projected revenues. I'm very expensive, I'm sorry. So if you wanna look at the revenue sheet first? Is everybody good with that? So what I've included there is, um, in the columns is FY twenty-twenty-five budget. That was our proposed budget last year. Then middle column is the actuals, year-to-date. And then the last column is what I have down for proposed for twenty-twenty-six. The EMS, now that we have the, um, voter-approved levy, we do have an advisory council that assesses the needs of the county. So there, I take this information to that advisory board and they make, they review the needs and assess the county, and then I come back to you guys. They aren't a board, they're just an advisory board, they are not a decision-making board. They only make recommendations to you guys, you guys are the vote. With the tax levy, we don't get numbers until after the proposed budget is sent in and approved.
No, you, I gave you the numbers.
Yeah, once your evaluations are approved, Texas Tabby gave you the numbers. So I have these, what, just before the holidays, um, we have not had an advisory council meeting yet. So if you look at the numbers, we basically have two sources of revenue. We have our tax dollars, which is the bottom half of the page, and then we have our call revenue. Uh, you have a couple lines in there for some grants, for some donations, some, some special event donations, and some CPR income. Uh, but those are pretty minute amounts compared to the, the other two line items. So our call revenue, last year we projected six seventy-five, year-to-date we're at three sixty-four, so I've moved that up to seven fifty. We need to get some extra dollars somewhere, and that's about all we have an option to do to raise, so I will review that with our board to make sure they're comfortable with that number, but that's one number that could possibly change up or down depending on the advisory council's recommendation based on actuals. Down at the bottom of that page where I have in, in bold print, there's this tax levy. Fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, our actual income from the tax levy was one point two eight seven, et cetera, million. Projected for twenty-twenty-five was one point three two four. So that's a forty-six thousand dollar increase. And then from twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six, it's a forty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollar increase. So you can see we don't get a lot of increase each year from our, from our tax levy.
Where, where, where do those numbers come from, though?
Which ones?
The ones in the bold at the bottom, the projected.
The, the totals added up that I got from you.
You're, are you taking the utility in Homestead?
Correct.
All those?
Correct.
Okay.
Rolled in together?
Okay.
So, question's on the revenue side.
So the, the call revenue is now what you bill out, is what you get?
Correct.
And that's decided by insurance companies and Medicare?
So we have contracts with like Medicare, we have contracts with Blue Cross Blue Shield.
You individually do?
As a service, yes, so we have, we accept Medicare assignment. And Blue Cross is pretty much.
Tell you what they're gonna do?
Correct.
Are they comparable? I don't know, I don't know why I care about it.
Uh, we get a little more from Blue Cross and Blue Shield than maybe from Medicare, but it's a reduction to our rates.
So, so, uh, wait. Layman's question, uh, so you've got all these local services out there yet too, and I don't know how many there are, there's, I know you mentioned Titanca, I know there's Whittmore.
There's eight.
Okay, and so who decides who gets what?
So this, the law is whoever transports the patient is who can charge.
Who decides who gets to transport the patient?
Um, we go by our territory. So we always let the volunteer service have the first option to transport. Whether they take them themselves or if we jump in and provide advanced life support with them, they have the option to transport first.
So this is, this is, uh, I'm, I'm sorry to take your time, my education, but, uh, this is, there's eight.
Correct.
But Algonquin no longer has one at all because.
Right, there used to be ten.
Okay, who dropped out, Sway City now?
Sway City now, Algonquin.
So who are the other eight quickly?
Uh, so we have Wesley.
Yes.
Whittmore.
Yeah.
Uh, then after Burton, Bancroft, Lone Rock, Fenton, and Lakota. Titanca.
Yeah, Titanca.
Forgot where I started going around.
And you, and you need them, I mean, right, you couldn't.
Oh, definitely.
You couldn't do it all.
So when we did this, uh, assessment on setting up this system in Casoot County, and we looked at service areas, and we looked at response times, uh, the state, the state has a recommendation of ten minutes for, for first response, no matter where you live in the county, and twenty minutes to advanced life support. So when we set up our system, our goal was to have that ten-minute response, plus our ALS, we strive for fifteen minutes. We want ALS onsite within fifteen minutes in the county. So that's how we kind of had to decide where to station the two services at, so without the volunteer services, we can't make that first ten minutes countywide.
And you, and you, and you probably still can't, even with it, right? There's places in the county you can't physically get to that fast.
Correct. And it's really tough during the daytime hours because so many people, you know, our, our small communities are turned into veteran communities, we don't have the volunteers in town during the day, and they're working in the larger communities. So we, we struggle with responses during the daytime.
That's only how it works.
Yeah, I, and I said this back when we had our community meetings, as I see in the future, we'll have our two hubs, and we're gonna have to put a chase vehicle somewhere between those two hubs to, to get that first response, have a paramedic stationed in a, in a SUV type of a vehicle where they go and provide that first care before an ambulance comes behind them. And hopefully we drag that out the further, the further we can by keeping our volunteers active and.
Sorry for interrupting.
No, so as far as billing goes, so we're on that subject, so if they transport, they get a bill. Uh, if we, if we're in their ambulance and we provide advanced life support, they can bill that call as an advanced life support, and they keep that extra money. So the advantage with our, with our budget is we do have a year and a half of actuals now. Our first year revenues were tough because insurance companies built three months behind, so when we started this system, we had zero income for three months. Uh, we had no call revenue, we had no tax revenue for three months, so our first three months, we operated pretty tight. And at the end of our, end of the first fiscal year, we, we were able to have six hundred and forty-some thousand dollars left in fund balance. Uh, so we had that money to start the second year with, so we, we tried to operate very, very tight, very efficiently that first year to, to, to get to that point. So on our expenses, this is truly a work in progress, so I guess the, that most, best part of this to take away is that two point one three two, two oh three, that, the bottom line dollars is what our income expenses are gonna be. Um, how they get split out is gonna have to take some, some work with the advisory council. Because if we look at our new expenses for next year, um, we've been meeting with the city of Algonquin, and they want us to start paying for part of the dispatch center in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. Uh, the, the, you have the training complex.
Say that again.
The dispatch center.
And where's the dispatch center? Just right over here?
Yeah. So that's always, that's always been funded between this, the city and the county.
Yeah, and.
The frustrating part to me is, and, you know, God, when I've had this conversation is the city always paid the EMS side because the majority of the calls were in the city of Algonquin, and there was a city department. Now that we're not a city department, they're looking at a way for the city to save money and hence throw it back on EMS. I know, everybody thinks that we have this levy, that we have bottomless pockets, but we don't. I mean, I just showed you, our, our revenue went up forty thousand dollars, we have one entity wanting sixty of that forty. We have to cut it from somewhere to make that work, so there's sixty thousand there for the dispatch center, and we're the only ones being charged, they still don't charge for the fire departments or anybody else, it'll just be the sheriff's office, the police department, and now EMS. But our call volume is a lot higher than fire and anybody else's, so that's why they went towards us. Uh, the training complex, I projected six thousand dollars, I haven't been allowed to see any actual numbers that, expenses that have occurred there for that.
Catch me, I, I, I can't see where you're at, I'm, I'm.
Way down the bottom.
I see the sixty thousand, now, but is the si, is the six thousand, the sixty thousand in here?
Yeah, so the six thousand is up on the red utilities, I highlighted that complex, six thousand dollars.
Okay.
That's an additional charge. And then that's before, you know, we talk or discuss any raises for the staff.
You don't have a line item for dispatch here yet though, right? That's just your highlights on the side.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
Just that, the highlights on the side, if you start at the very top one, it shows volunteer services support. We've been giving them eighty thousand dollars, um, had a conversation with different volunteer services. So far, we, we, this is our second year, so we've given each service twenty thousand dollars. I've had one service that actually spent the money towards equipment, towards improving their service. Um, that other service is telling me they don't want the money, they have too much already. So I think we need to look at that line and, and come up with a plan on how to spend that more efficiently than just giving it to a service to add to account that they have three hundred thousand dollars sitting in.
Yeah.
So that would be one place to look at it, we're gonna have to take some from education and training probably, then some from our equipment replacement. That was the highlighted items on their side. That's what I'm gonna propose to the advisory council. Like I say, they could decide to add a little bit more to the call revenue. And not take so much from some of these other areas. We do have an ambulance order. Should be here probably January, February, twenty, twenty-sixth, so a year from today. It's a two-year process from the time you order an ambulance until it gets delivered. So we, we do settle aside money every year to go towards vehicle replacement. Um, so that's why that shows the hundred and sixty plus the additional one sixty-five we'll have to pull from our fund balance to put in, which was saved from the last two years. our fund balance to put in, which was saved from the last two years.
And part of that's coming out of ARPA funds too, correct?
That's before considering any ARPA funds. So any ARPA funds that would come in would reduce the money we have to take.
You're still gonna have to budget for that though. You're still gonna have to budget that amount though.
Okay.
Yep. You have to have a budget to be able to spend, especially for your total. I mean, fluctuate line items.
So whatever ARPA money we give, we just save on that side to go back to fund balance.
It doesn't, it doesn't work like that. So you don't, you don't get the money. You don't, you.
You just won't spend it as much.
You, you don't receive the funds. What happens is once you purchase the vehicle, then it'll be paid for with those funds. So you won't be getting a check or anything for those funds. When you turn in a claim, it'll be paid for out of that account.
Right, just like we did previously with ARPA funds.
Right.
Yep. It'll be paid for directly by ARPA.
But we can put that in the actual budget as a line item, right?
Mm-hmm.
Under the ARPA count. So if we put.
You have to with ARPA yet.
So I would not have to add that hundred and sixty-five if we added the ARPA in.
Yes, but you just have to make sure you have that in there.
So that's more just a note for me that that's how much money I need to add into my budget, whether it comes from.
We need to add that separate line item. Yep.
And we've, we've had that before, correct? That line item before.
Yes.
I think so.
As far as wages, we've been approved for, for nine staff for the last few years. I'd like to start working towards increasing that to eleven over the next however many years it takes. We haven't made it higher than nine person yet, so I don't know how long it could take to have eleven, but I'd like to start planning that, just in case we do get a couple of great applicants. I can get one. It's been two years since we've had an application. We're still advertising, so we do have a paramedic school that will be completing. It'll be the first class basis. Completing since COVID, when they canceled all the classes, so. It's pretty tight. Most of the ones that are in that class already have a job. They're been spoken for, they're being sponsored by somebody, but we have one person in that class that we're sponsoring, so we'll see what happens. Maybe we can, good luck, you know, grab another one. Keep working on that side of it. So as far as your child days go with the complex, somehow you guys are gonna have to make a decision how that's gonna be, be paid for. Who's gonna pay for it?
When you say complex, do you mean crisis facility on Phillip Street?
Correct. The emergency response training complex.
I, I'm just confusing myself, so sorry.
Well, that's okay, cuz I was wondering too.
Yeah, it's, it's not crisis facility, but the emergency response.
Anyway, I have a little corner there, two shelves that I keep EMS supplies on. We store spare ambulances in there that's used by all services in the county. So if anybody's ambulance breaks down, we have one sitting there. They're worth anything of trade in. It's a two thousand and eight with two hundred and fifty-ish some thousand miles. But it's three hundred dollars a day to rent an ambulance. We have Titanca, our cohort recently had a problem with their ambulance. They come and got it. They had it for like eight days. Right there, saving twenty-four hundred bucks. We kept an ambulance in that part of the county. So that's kind of what we do is we rotate ambulance. Now we're gonna keep the spare one. That's housed at the facility.
So can I ask if you pay rent? Where does, who gets the rent? Where does that go? What budget does that go towards? If you're paying rent.
They haven't started yet, so nobody seems to know.
This conversation started last July.
No, nothing's happened yet. So that's the confusing part is.
One of, one of the pieces of that was between EMS, EMA, and E nine one one. There was talk of splitting utilities, but that hasn't came back.
Yeah, we were supposed to have a conversation on that. Tried to have a conversation and was told that it wasn't my decision. It was EMA's commission decision on how that's gonna be split.
Is there something, is there something that could be done as far as the cost allocation plan? Kind of like what we do, I don't know, maybe we don't do it anymore with the annex and the.
Yeah.
Is there, is, is there a, I mean, not like wanna spend more money, but is there a company that can come and assess that? So it's not just.
In-house?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's broken down and then we, we have that as part of that every year or whenever it's done and we know it's fair?
And part of that conversation was, I mean, sheriff, the sheriff's office primarily uses the east side of the tracks. They don't use much in the cold storage.
Oh, I figured.
They primarily use the east side of the tracks, but they also do training and stuff on the west side in the heated portion of the building. But we did talk about, there is a difference between EMS and sheriff being county departments. E nine one one and EMA are not county entities.
E nine one one and EMA are not?
They have separate commissions. So there, there is a, a nature of a difference between those four, two are direct county departments and two are not.
I have no problem paying my share of the utilities. It's a cost that we incur.
Well, right, it's just how to get there.
I use that training, I use that training facility. Right now, we use it two nights a week.
Well, I think it's a good thing.
Been doing this, you know, for, for quite a while. I do use that a lot. It's nice to have the storage for that vehicle. We also had that trailer in there, that emergency response trailer in there, which I consider as part of our area. That has been sold, so that will be coming out of there. So that's gonna free up some space in there. So I don't know. I cannot get anywhere as far as trying to come up with a reasonable way to split the costs. I went to the EMA meeting where they discussed this. A vote was made that we split the utilities and I was not allowed to even see the actual cost of what the utilities were for the building. Nor was I asked a question or allowed to speak at that meeting, so.
Where is the, where is that paid out of right now? The utilities for that building?
Supervisors, cuz it's owned by the supervisors because it was paid for with ARPA funds. It cannot be owned by emergency management because they're not a county entity. So it's owned by the, by the county, by the supervisors or in charge of that building and the utilities for that building.
So then why is the decision, I don't, correct me, why is the decision being made in the EMA?
That's a good question. That's a good question.
If the supervisors are paying the.
That's a good question.
It should be a decision in this boardroom, but we tried to let the department heads.
Just to clarify.
Yeah, we tried to let the department heads that were involved in the day-to-day use of it get together and come up with a.
I think the decision has to be a twofold decision. What is, of what the, how the split's gonna be as far as paying utilities and the other part is how the control of the building is gonna continue to be, who's gonna be in charge of it? Was the split in charge or?
Well, I think that might be a discussion for a different day. Any background information, obviously. I don't have all that. It was just, I was curious if we're paying.
What I did is I put down six thousand dollars for, for the cost of the utilities. Whether that's an accurate number or not, I don't know.
We're paying utilities now.
We are.
Supervisor.
And how much is it?
I did get some number, I did get some numbers from Brittany.
Yeah.
That six thousand dollars probably gonna be pretty close to fifty percent.
For the year?
For the year. That'd be water, sewer, electric, gas, and internet.
Okay.
I think it was just shy of ten thousand dollar actual cost, but increases and stuff, I, that's where I came up with the six thousand.
I think we do need to finish that discussion for the building before budget's over here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree.
I did, I sat down and I did draw up a diagram of the facility and what areas used by me, what areas used by different people and what's a common, I marked as common area, which is area where there's nothing there, but it's used by all entities. Put the common areas up at fifty percent and then hundred percent on the actuals of the other, of the other parts. And then I, I did break that down into the actual percentages. But I also stated on here that any change to the occupancy of that building should result in the change of the percentages. For example, my office used to be across the street and I was asked to vacate that office space. I had to pay for my new office space out of my own budget. Plus I pay a hundred percent of my own utilities out of my budget. For some reason, she has not been asked to leave there. She still stays there and doesn't have to pay any utilities. If at some point she's asked to leave that facility and moves her office to a twelve thousand square foot building, I shouldn't have to pay half the heat to heat that size of a building for an office space.
Well, it sounds like there's some conflict, so I think to be safe, we best not.
I don't expect an answer to that. These are things that need to be addressed, so I know it's been my budget for that facility.
Yeah, that's a topic we're gonna need to dig into.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a lot of stuff that is different from, you know, these numbers, so we probably better stick to that part.
Is there anything else you had for us though, or?
No, that's, those are the three things that I'm looking at is, is the dispatch center, the utilities, and then looking at the raises, you know, for the staff.
What percent is in there?
So on my, on the, on the third one down, the other volunteer help, we're gonna have to do a line adjustment on that line. We've been running into red on that line since we started Casuma EMS. That won't be a percent increase, but we'll still do an increase for the staff. Same with the deputies' salaries. I'd like to increase that a little bit more than what the percent raise changes that number, just because we need to change that number now that we have some, some actual numbers to go by. Salaries, I'm looking at that four to seven percent. Depending on what the deputies do. We're twenty-four hour employees, seven day a week employees. We work holidays, we work nights, weekends, just like they do. You know, if they get a four percent, we'll go with four percent.
Are you, did, did you just not have time to put them on these sheets?
What's that?
These, these numbers on, on our budget work sheets. Did you just not have time or? It's kind of helpful to see it on there because then we have history.
I can. I can put them in there.
Well, I think we have to have them in there eventually, right? So it'd be, it'd be kind of helpful to see the history there of not, I'm not talking about salaries, I'm just talking about everything in general for the.
I didn't wanna put a bunch of numbers in there and then have them changed after we have our advisory council meeting and go through this, you know, line by line detail.
Okay.
But I can't, I mean.
Okay, I'm not, I'm just trying to understand. I don't know the process. We put the numbers in there, correct? We, we say that, who, who's in charge of the budget?
So the supervisors have final authority for EMS.
The advisor, that's the.
The advisory council is supposed to make recommendations to the boardroom.
Okay.
And I think to some degree, I mean, it's a little bit of a formatting thing, like Kendall loves with conservation. He comes to the.
Right, but he, but they're also in there though.
Right, and they can be put in there. There's no reason they shouldn't be in there at this point. It's just if anything changes, you adjust the line item.
Exactly. Well, yeah, exactly, exactly. I was just wondering, just I find it easier to read and follow when I can see the history.
I can put them in there. It's just, I don't know how much is gonna change with only having a forty thousand increase in there and then raising that if they're gonna go along with that. And if not, we're up to adjust numbers.
Yeah.
Differently, but we completed what we have so far.
So starting at the top, it was ninety-five thousand. That's you, I take it?
Yeah, I just put a number there. We're gonna have to do an adjustment there.
And then the eight fifty is for nine people?
No, that would be going to eleven.
It'd be going to eleven. And the hundred is for volunteer help?
Correct.
And, and, excuse me, probably, so you, you compensate them something. It's not a great deal or what, what does that represent?
So any volunteer, so we have a countywide roster.
Yep.
So all of us are rostered as a group. Okay, so we have a contracts and stuff where we can work together as a group. Anybody that comes and picks up a shift of a full-time person, okay, gets paid a.
So these are, are these are people who are volunteers that help you and you pay them?
Correct.
Technically, they're not volunteers cuz they're getting paid.
No, but they're volunteers from other.
Yes.
It's basically, it's basically like, it's basically like part-time help without being on the schedule.
Right.
It's not like, you might have a part-time person that works twenty hours a week at a job. They might work forty hours one time and ten the next or zero. It, it fluctuates up and down. They're not true constant part-time.
See us drivers that, that don't connect, where do they fall into here?
The volunteers. They're the volunteer. Yeah, so any transfer we take, we utilize a lot of volunteers for our transfers.
That's fine.
Drivers and staff, they all fall into that line.
Understand.
So are the, the deputy salaries from nine to eleven, are they like salaried? Are they hourly?
They're hourly.
Okay, like what's their hourly wage?
Our EMTs are at twenty-two dollars an hour.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
Now.
Correct.
Well, right now, not with an increase yet.
Our advanced EMTs are at twenty-four. Our paramedics are twenty-six.
What, what kind of percent increase is reflected in that? Eight hundred, eight hundred fifty thousand?
There's.
Or none?
There's none. So last year's number was seven fifty-four, okay?
Yep.
So I put eight fifty in the hopes that I could add one more person. So whatever we do for raises is gonna have to work in that number, cuz that's all we got. That's all we can put there. And if I have enough left, we're gonna add another person, even if it's mid-year.
I miss paramedics. What was paramedics?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, and we also have critical care paramedics, right? There's another.
They're fifty cents extra.
They're twenty-six, fifty?
Yeah, they get their critical care endorsement.
Yep.
Goodness.
They work three days on, four days off.
Okay.
That's twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hour shifts. They get paid sixteen hours of regular time and eight hours of sleep time. And then we have to follow the labor laws that if they do not get five hours of uninterrupted sleep, we have to pay them for the whole night.
Okay, interesting.
So they don't necessarily work those three days in a row. Some of them like to work a day on, day off, day on, day off. Some of them like to come and work their three. So we kind of, we do try to fit everybody's needs, what looks the best. So they work forty-eight hours, regular time in a week if they don't have any callbacks, and twenty-four hours of sleep time. They get paid seven twenty-five an hour of sleep time. To be on call, to be on. We require two-minute response during the sixteen-hour shift and a five-hour, five-minute response during that time. Thought there was just a little history that needs to.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's good. Are you, so you, like, do you just have regular hours or what? Like, what's your role? How do you do that?
Regular hours.
Well, I didn't know. I didn't know if he had like office hours or.
I do. I try to work eight to five.
Okay.
On Monday through Friday. I just had in my set, plan to be in the office. If somebody calls in sick, I'm there at seven AM. Their shift started, their shifts are seven AM to seven AM.
Okay.
So if I get a call at six in the morning that somebody's sick, I go in and cover that shift for the day. Couple, couple weeks ago, I covered a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, seventy-two hours straight for somebody that was sick. Couldn't find anybody to come in and work it, so I just worked it, so. Yeah, I'm pretty much twenty-four, seven.
Then do you modify kind of a little bit if you're able to your hours?
If I'm able to, so, yeah, if I, like that weekend, I worked that Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I took a day off the next week. I think I took Monday off after working three day weekend.
So do you not work Fridays then? All your hours, you said Friday, you worked a three-day weekend. Do you work four days a week?
No, I work Monday through Friday.
Oh, okay. I must have misheard you then. I thought you said a three-day weekend.
He, he had a three-day weekend from someone that couldn't show up or didn't.
I worked three days.
Six, so he, he would have worked. So he he would work Monday through Thursday before that, and then still work Friday.
Okay, gotcha.
So our staff, our.
He worked Sunday.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Our staff, when they work weekends, their weekends are Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so when they have the weekends off, they have Friday, Saturday, Sunday off for sure.
Okay.
So if somebody gets sick on a weekend, they're sick all weekend, we have to cover Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Okay.
So when you were setting this up, this is not a budget question, but when you were setting this up, at least my concern was, you know, people are, the people are gonna flock to the city, you know, like general population, is it, how hard is it to, I know you said you're trying to hire, but what's gonna alleviate the, if there is a problem, what's gonna alleviate it?
We have to try to hire from what we have for our niche, our niche is, we run fifteen hundred calls a year, so you're not extreme. So we have to, we have to try to recruit from the people that have been in it for a lot of years that want to slow down.
Okay.
For us to pull a twenty-year-old right out of school, nah, they're going to Des Moines, they're going to Kansas City, they're going where the action is, they don't wanna come here. So we just have to, we have to try to recruit from our niche.
And is that a.
And we're trying, we're trying really hard to recruit from within, build from our staff that we have within. Cuz they're all the people that we hired, and they're, you know, they're planning on staying here, so if we can in- increase their certifications and send them to school, that's what we're, that's what we're building on right now.
I think we've had pretty good success of that the last couple of years of starting to develop that talent pipeline, you could say.
Yeah, like I said, we have the one.
You're going to high schools and stuff like that to recruit.
We do May term, and we bring high school kids in, trying to recruit from there. So I talked to Kyle, and I understand Amber's gonna be the alternate to to our group, so welcome.
Yeah, yeah.
And we'll give you any more money instead of getting stuff.
Kyle, I've kind of talked about when to get this meeting in place and when to have it.
Yeah, it might grow to one, the first one maybe just.
Yeah, it'd be good.
We try not to have, we try to meet quarterly with them, you know, because it's a volunteer position, and we don't wanna try to meet during the whole process, since that we were meeting weekly for about a year. They're kind of appreciating the break a little bit down to quarterly, so we don't wanna bring those people out, because they're volunteering their time to to do this.
I do think we've got a pretty good mix of people on there. Say, if a person can has some, some strength of a piece of the information that they can dig into and evaluate, it's.
Hey, it's a pretty good blend.
Yeah.
People we have. And they're open to public, anybody's welcome to come, you know, Josh, or to, hey, they're welcome to come to this meetings.
Yeah. Yeah.
So are we, I mean, aren't we trying to stick to the four percent, though?
Yeah, I mean, that's what we had talked about, sticking to for a target, I I do know, um, as much as the health insurance and stuff was talked about, this was a brand-new department, and it didn't experience any of the wage scale changes that some other departments and positions did in the courthouse, so take it for what it is, but this department was treated a little differently in that because of the timing of how things happened, so.
Because did they get zero last year?
Yes.
As well?
Yep.
And health insurance, should I just kind of put a number in that until you guys get the actual final rates for that?
Well, we just got initial rates this morning, obviously, so we were in for tail end of that, but I would anticipate that at the whole.
I'm sure it will.
Yeah.
If you could get me those worksheets, that would be great, I know you have the twenty-six thousand fund, but you do have some out of the one thousand fund, and we'd like to look at fund balances, so that kind of helps us there a little bit.
Yeah, and does his, like, for the budget, where does his fall under, does it have a whole separate column, or is it?
He has a separate fund.
Well, yeah, but I mean, on like the big budget, when you do the state, like which column does does it fall under?
Um, I think it's this other.
It other?
I I have to look, I can't remember, but, yeah.
It's not like a general other, it's just other.
I think so, I'll have to double-check, though, to make sure, but he does have some line items that come out of general basic, like the ARPA line item would come out of general.
But that's not.
Is this?
The only thing I have out of one thousand is was the ARPA.
Yeah, but if you're gonna be budgeting an ambulance, we need to know that.
I was gonna say, is.
Right. Right.
There shouldn't be anything else for general basic out of this budget?
No.
I just think that, just the ARPA, I think.
The ARPA, okay, yeah, which that's, yeah.
But that's a good chunk of money, so.
Yeah, I mean.
Look up this non-departmental stuff here, the adult services for mental health transports and stuff like that.
Oh, yeah, the mental health transports.
Yeah, you and I talked about that one, um.
Is that kind of on base?
That's an, that's an in and out account, so we we do mental health transports for the hospital.
That's a one thousand.
Um, it was part of a grand process when we got the Suburban, um, that was paid for through mental health. So we were helping the hospital by trying to get their their mental health patients out, um, quickly. Since July first, we've taken every mental health transport, they've had it as a one, so it's, we've been helping them really well. And one just was a timing issue where we just, I was in Des Moines that weekend, I just couldn't find anybody to drive it. Cam ended up taking it, who was part-time for us, so we kind of covered it, yet the hospital kind of covered it, and it was taken in my vehicle, I just wasn't here to do it. But that's, so that's in and out, so the hospital pays us to do that. We have a contract with them where they pay us to do that, and then we pay our our staff for 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 dragging that person. Um, I think year to day, we're like twenty-two hundred dollars in and out. So next year, we're probably, we've talked about budgeting five thousand for that as a number, but that's, that's, we 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 get in more than what we spend, so it's, it's kind of washing itself out.
Yeah.
Here, you got sixty-eight, fifty-five for the, for that.
Why am I not finding that?
Did did you see the line item for ARPA?
Oh.
I did.
That's that's at the bottom of page six, the second to the last one.
The what is, I'm sorry.
The line item for ARPA for motor vehicle for the engines.
Yeah.
So we we should have that already, ready to plug that number into.
Well, depends on what number you wanna plug in there, because you, in the resolution, you said up to two hundred thousand, so that's not a, you know, I mean, you're gonna have to say what exactly amount you want.
Do we have some of the other numbers, um, finalized anymore for what their expenditures are gonna be? Yet, or has anything changed since that point?
No, nothing's changed, but, um.
Then we'll probably just go through those numbers and see what we had available, again, I know we rounded that up a little bit, but we'll have to probably put in whatever we have available, because we'll have to.
Well, and some of it's not gonna be paid till, like, the seventy thousand for.
Yeah, yeah, we'll.
That's not gonna be paid till.
We accounted for all that.
Yeah.
Yep.
So three I have is the medical examiner, the mental health, and then the EMS.
There's.
Yeah.
Only reason I knew that was cuz I put the, put it in the ambulance spot, and then I took it out, so I had it right here, so I was like looking at ambulance.
The ambulance? I'm like looking at ambulance going, why can I not find that?
With maximum.
All right.
And it's like.
I used to do the expanding, I just.
So I've asked questions about the vehicle, and I don't have any idea anything about the vehicle, the Suburban. Um, I've been, I've been asked if it's a mental health transport vehicle. Are we only transporting people during the office hours that you're there? Because people are asking, and they, and I did say I would ask, because I don't know how any of that came about. Um, like, how can you do it, do you get on call, are you on call with the vehicle, and if there's a mental health transport, you drive back to Algonah for it, or? How does that work?
Oh, when at home?
Yeah, when you're home.
That's just like anything else, I mean, I get called out twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, I don't, I never know.
Right, but like if it was, I guess the question is if it was for mental health transports, like, why isn't it left somewhere, that's what I was asked, why isn't it left?
So that was written twofold, it was written for mental health transport and, um, response within Kaseem County, emergency response within Kaseem County, so it wasn't written just for mental health.
Okay, okay.
But that was a part of it.
Okay, okay, understood, maybe that's the part that is being left off. Okay.
I'd gladly, but no more. Play all my playing, it's my league golf.
Well, that's, that isn't why I asked, because we're asking, they said if it was meant just for that, how can it not be in Algonah? And I'm asking what I was asked, that's.
Yeah, and.
And it's been more than one person, so I did say that I would ask the question, because I didn't have an answer for them, I didn't know.
Randy, Randy, he was one of the mental health drivers for us, he lives up in Sweet City. So I happen to be home and there's a transfer, and I call him to take it, then he just makes it from my house, and doesn't.
Okay.
And and Phil takes that vehicle home for the same reason the sheriffs do, and emergency management, all those is the twenty-four seven nature of those positions, is if something happens, X, Y, Z, they're gonna be faster to respond from their house than driving to Algonah to get a vehicle to drive to the scene.
If I go, if I go on vacation, or if I'm gone for a weekend or something, I leave the vehicle down here.
Yeah, and you was gone, what was it, this last year, you were around for a cruise, and yeah, you left it at the hospital while you were gone there?
No, if you have any questions, don't, don't, don't be afraid to ask questions. Say, we're only, we're only, we're only a year and a half old, we cancel everything we do as one hundred percent correct, but we're, we made a lot of, a lot of strides, a lot of improvements.
What's the biggest challenge?
Staff. Yeah, it's a, it's a demanding, I mean, you start with the twenty-four hour shifts, and you work Christmas Day, and you work, you know, the holidays, your birthdays, it's. But there's a positive side, you only work there three days and have four days off, so I mean, there's, there's a positive side to the other side, too.
I'm surprised, you said some people don't wanna work consecutive days, how in the heck do you drop the schedule, or you don't know?
The good thing is our weekends are Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so I only really have to schedule four days, Monday through Thursday, uh, cuz we have a true rotation for our weekends, and if they want a weekend off and they're scheduled that weekend, they, they're responsible for trading or switching weekends with somebody else. So I truly only schedule Monday through Thursday. Except for vacations, vacations and sick leave, you know, it's, those are always strong.
So you're nine people. Yeah, I don't even know, I don't.
But then if they work weekends.
It's a complex schedule.
Well, you know, especially if you had to work, you know, you say you had to work the weekend, then when do you come, when do you come back, when do you come back to work?
Our, our, our week starts seven AM Monday, Sunday morning, so our week splits the weekend shift beside, so if you work this weekend, you, you work a Sunday here, if you were on that weekend, you worked a Sunday, so that's your one day, so you need to pick up two days during that week, but if it's your weekend here, you work two days, you pick up one day, and then the weekends, you don't have either, you need to pick up three.
Yeah, okay, I, I didn't even try, so.
Yeah.
All right, well, thanks.
Hey, if you have any good questions, holler, thank you.
Thanks.
Do we know what's coming up, or do we need to call me or something?
Yeah, since, since he was up at one fifty, or stayed up at one fifteen.
Form for new supervisors, cuz that's pretty easy, isn't it?
It is easy, unless. And then if if you want to, I did go in and kind of play with, um, the levy a little bit for general supplemental, and do have um, fund balances, of course, they're not complete, because we don't have all the numbers in, but to give you an idea of kind of where we're sitting, if you'd like to look at them, um, I'd be happy to share that with you, too.
Do you have printouts for that, or email, or just numbers on?
No. Numbers, or I could plug it in or something, or email, I could email it to you, too.
Okay, yeah, that'd be fine, whatever. Do you want to call Doug, so he can come up here, or?
Yep.
Um, yeah, we installed your supervisors, but I'm sure I'll take them.
Hey, Doug, it's Josh up here in the boardroom, we'll be, we'll be ready for you here in just a few minutes. Alright, thanks, bye.
So supervisors, um, some of the things, I don't know, um, uh, I wanted to talk to you guys about insurance, um, as far as your health insurance, um, Kyle, I know, uh, you're gonna be having some life events changed this next year, so I didn't know if we.
Oh, really? You did, okay.
So if that needs to be changed, as far as your insurance goes or not?
Probably should budget for it, I don't know for sure, though, um, but, yeah, that'll be the end of this calendar year.
So, budget for family?
Probably.
Okay, um, economic development at the top, um, requested a hundred and twenty-five thousand, um, that comes out of supervisor's budget. Otherwise, I put in four percent for raises, um, supplies, I just added an extra fifty dollars, I know with two new supervisors, might be a little bit more, but otherwise, um, I was kind of just looking for you guys to give me guidance, um, you guys at one time had kind of put a limit on how much you're gonna spend for attorney fees, for, um, pipeline, so I didn't know if you wanted five thousand in again for next year, I put it in.
What did we have in there last year, was it twenty-five?
It was five last year. Or the current, this current year or the year before, fifty?
Okay. They cut out a little bit, you say five or twenty-five?
Five.
Five, okay.
Uh, right.
Page two.
Okay, page two, some fourth one.
Oh, pipeline, okay.
Yep. I guess.
You already spent eight thousand?
Yeah, I mean, we're a little over right now, but we probably shouldn't have much more, um, we're really kind of waiting for court decisions. I'm not opposed to having a little bit in there, but I guess I would say we should probably cut it off pretty soon, because I don't really know what else we have a need to spend money on. Anyone else?
I would say keep it there for at least this next budget year, and.
I think you're good.
Hopefully.
Go to that date, oh, go ahead, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I was just gonna say hopefully stuff kind of gets, uh, settled, and and then by next budget year, we can take that off, but I would say we need to increase it, but I definitely don't wanna decrease it, considering this year, we went over, um, just based on legal fees and stuff. I would, I would say.
Just need it for, for now.
Okay. You're talking about cutting it off, or about eliminating it, or what are you talking about, I'm not sure I understand.
Well, either way, I mean, whatever we put in the budget for next year is obviously what we're budgeting on paper, but I mean, from the standpoint of how, how much longer we continue the legal fight, I, I don't know that it's something that has a lot of fruitfulness at the end of the.
Rainbow, at this point, I mean, we're really waiting for decisions right now, there's, I don't know that there's many.
I don't know that there's many more avenues that can be fought, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
Not saying there won't be some more bills coming in or whatever, but I just, I don't know if it's worth pushing it forever and ever and ever on top of what we've done.
I'm still just kinda saying, leave it as it is for now.
I'm not opposed to leaving five thousand. That doesn't bother me.
Kurt, you were gonna say something to that too.
Well, all I was gonna say was, I, I assumed that eight thousand some dollar mark was mostly spent in the first three months of the fiscal year, but I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I would guess you're probably right.
Yeah, I would say so.
But either way, I guess you guys are moving forward in the direction I thought. It would be best to leave it there, not knowing how the year's gonna go.
I really don't see anything else, so. Do you want to stop, like, change it? I don't really see anything that looked that long.
Yeah, I.
Everything looks like it's.
I pretty much.
But it'd be pretty good. Yeah, I think it'd be health insurance, if you gotta change that line item, and you're probably gonna have to change it eventually when we figure out, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna have to change everybody's, I'm sure. Um, the only other thing was the animal bounties. I know you guys had limited that, but we're already over this year, so I did raise that from five thousand to seventy-five hundred. You can tell me if you want it back at five, but we're already at fifty-eight hundred.
Yeah, we're already over it. I mean, to bring it a little bit, I think, I don't think you're far off from that number.
I think some, I think a fair bit of that was carried over from year to year, and I think some of that's the individuals that I don't, I don't know if there's a purpose to that or not, but a couple of years before that, we were lower, so.
Cause does that mean there's a beaver's?
Yeah.
Well, if it saves us money in drainage, I think it's okay, but if they wanna drop them, let them drop them.
I agree.
I know I had a couple of individuals that turned in quite a few of multiple years of beaver tails. It wasn't just in the past year, caught a few, so.
Yeah, and I.
Like you say, depends on you here and who turns in what.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll leave that then. Okay.
All right.
Hi Doug.
Hello. How are you guys doing?
Since we're kinda bringing a two fifty, we wanna go back to self-insurance, or we just don't cut it to engineer?
I'd say self-insurance, that's a pretty big topic we need to hit, but I don't know.
Are we gonna be changing stuff next week though, for what we asked her for? I mean, I'm just asking. We're spinning our wheels today if what we asked her for is gonna change everything.
I would, I wouldn't say we're spinning our wheels, but I think we should go over the fund balances and some of that stuff and well, I mean, we probably, we may not have a hard number or hard direction, but I think we should see what we got for numbers and projections right now. I don't know.
Thank you, Doug.
I, we went over last, uh, week, the.
Thank you.
Um, fund balance. And, and in an effort to try to, um, quickly refer to things, um, again, at the end of December, our, our fund balance in the health insurance fund is two million, four hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred twenty-three dollars and forty-seven cents. And if you look at the right of that top table, uh, the change over the year with December was, we ended up with a, um, we were negative one hundred thirty-four thousand, two hundred twenty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents. So what has been a question forever is what should that balance be? Um, that auditor's balance. And every year it gets discussed, um, it, it never, it never gets settled. But if you look at the second table down in those bottom three lines, if you estimate the ending balance just based on the usage through December, um, we're gonna end up with a balance of two million, three hundred forty-three thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-six cents. I call that balance one.
Is that keeping it the same? Keeping the, what we.
This is just going through this fiscal year, Amber.
Okay, okay.
This was me just trying to estimate what we're gonna end up with.
Okay.
If we would just use what we have for expected claims in our budgeted expenditures, uh, we would have two million, three hundred twenty-four thousand, five hundred four dollars and sixty-eight cents. And if we would, um, estimate using a max liability in our budgeted expenditures, uh, that would be, leave us a balance of one million, seven hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred twenty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. Now, what Michelle brought up with this, um, initial rates, we can expect, if you look right here, what they say our expected claim should be is two million, nine hundred forty-three thousand, five hundred ninety-five dollars. So in the third table, the first line, that's that number. If the max estimated la, max liability for our fund is at three million, four hundred sixty-three thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollars. Um, for wellness and audit and clerical, we budget thirty thousand dollars typically. And talking with Donna, that's kind of the number we thought we should put in there. If right now we are budgeting for contribution to the fund, eight hundred forty-five dollars for a single person policy, and currently we're budgeting two million, seventy-five thousand, or excuse me, two thousand, seventy-five dollars for a family. Um, we have forty-three singles, we have eighty-three families. If you multiply those out for the number of policies in the year, we end up with a estimated revenue for fiscal year twenty-six, which would begin July one of twenty twenty-five, of two million, five hundred, two thousand, seven hundred twenty dollars. And I estimate we'll receive about thirty thousand dollars in interest. So the question is how, what do we want to, uh, contribute? Or what do you wanna use for an ending balance at the end of next fiscal year, which would be June thirty, twenty twenty-six? So if we.
So that on the bottom, those last three things that are.
Correct, yeah.
Those are just the different scenarios that we could.
Correct.
Pick?
If we.
Or.
No, if we use the estimated ending balance, what I call balance one up there in the table, the second table.
Yeah.
And we have our expected claims and our budgeted expenditures. If we did that and we did not change any of the contributions, we end up with a, a balance estimated at one million, nine hundred two thousand, six hundred twenty dollars and twenty-six cents. Um, if we, um, had maximum liability and used that balance one, we would end up with one million, three hundred eighty-two thousand, seven hundred sixty-two dollars and twenty-six cents. And again, balance one was just based on, we've halfway through our year, um, we'll continue and we'll have the same type of year, so we'll end up with a balance more or less two times, we'll, we'll end up with a balance of, uh, change in monthly balance of two times what we have right now. Or change in annual balance, excuse me. Now, if we use that balance number two and use those same numbers, our expect, if we have a year with expected claims, uh, we would end up with a balance of one million, eight hundred eighty-three thousand, six hundred twenty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. If we would have maximum liability and using balance number two, we would end up with a balance of one million, three hundred sixty-three thousand, seven hundred seventy-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. And then the last, that would be, uh, if we had a maximum liability, uh, this year, which it could happen, but I, I think the chances of it are not there. We would end up with a, if we had just a regular year next year and an extreme year this year, our ending balance would be one million, three hundred forty-seven thousand, nine hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. And if we would have a max liability, uh, our balance could be as low as eight hundred twenty-eight thousand, ninety-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. So, again, what, what is the, what is that balance? What do we need for a balance? I, I don't have an answer. I think it should be expressed as some sort of a, um, some sort of a figure, a multiple of the expected claims. You know, if, if it's one year, uh, we should have one year of expected claims, uh, that would be the two million, nine hundred forty-three thousand, five hundred ninety-five. Uh, obviously, we wouldn't get there in, in a year. But it would be something to try to, um, to get to. If I, I could be, you know, it could be half of that. I, I don't know. I do feel our balance is gonna be somewhere, uh, this year in that, uh, two million, three hundred thousand to two million, four hundred thousand, when we're all said and done.
What's been the past kind of ending fund balances as a typical, okay, we felt comfortable? Do you have like that?
Our current.
Do you have the big spreadsheet that you always used to?
Other.
Yeah, but that got to be confusing. I, I just, I wanted to.
That's okay, but I mean, like.
Well, right now, our balance in January is two million, four hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred twenty-three dollars and forty-seven cents. Uh, we haven't had a balance that low since two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
Okay, what was it in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, or when it was not that low?
We had in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, it was two million, seven hundred fifty-six thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Yeah. All those numbers at the bottom, those three different, they're all too low.
Very low.
They're all way too low. I know that it's taking the worst, absolute worst case scenarios into play, but still, that could happen. It's too low. It's way too low. We don't want, we, we've been successful with self-insurance. We don't want to, um, we don't wanna cut our fund balances and then we're not successful. That, that's just too low. I guess. And it's gonna, I mean, no, that's a lot to make up, but I guess I, I, and maybe I'm shooting for the stars in my number, but three million dollar fund balance would be more like comfort, you know, but that's a lot of money to try and make up. Uh, we have to try and plan for future. You know, we're not just thinking of today and this year. We're trying to be successful for many years. It's saved the county a lot of money by doing this. So I, I know that, I don't want that to go, be cut anymore.
And I don't know if it's possible or if we can know it all, whether it's right now in discussion or another time, but, um, the heavy hit in December, I wonder if that has a correlation with the lump payment that Michelle was talking about previously where it pulls it out of the category, if a lot of that was made in December.
We have another large claim Michelle emailed me about, um, that I think will show up on the next, on the next bill. Um, this has been a strange, this has been a strange year. Uh, there's been nothing consistent. We'll have high, high bills for Wellmark and then followed by a full bill. Every other month, there's just no consistency to it.
Yeah, I mean, if you.
And the to try and predict the future is difficult.
Yeah, I was just looking, if you take December out of the equation, we would, would have had a positive balance. I, obviously, like you said, predicting the future, but I don't know if that's gonna continue or not, or if the next six months is gonna turn a back around.
One can hope, but we gotta plan for it. It's not.
I'm lost, kids.
It's okay.
So how is this, how is this, this comes out of the budget just to fund this fund in addition to paying Wellmark?
This, we, this fund gets revenue from, um, all departments. Uh, so there are property taxes, there's tipping fees, there's road use, as well as employee contributions. So revenue goes into it and then the bills for Wellmark get paid out of it, along with some of our wellness expenditures. We, we have screenings, we have vaccinations, um, there's audits and some clerical, things that get taken out of it. That's about somewhere in twenty, twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars. But the major, the majority of it is all just Wellmark bills.
So when you, when you talk about her, if you look at her projections.
Are you looking at this sheet here?
Yeah, I am. I believe I have it.
Yeah, no, it's, uh.
Nine seventy-nine and twenty-four forty-eight.
The initial, yeah, the initial renewal rate.
So if you, those are per month, per employee, and then that comes out of that, that fund pays that? And how does that fund get funded?
Property taxes, tipping fees, road use taxes, uh, the different, the different departments contribute.
So in order to increase that fund, you have to do what?
You determine what the department should be contributing to it, or whether the employees need to contribute to it.
It sounds like it's gonna fly very far.
But you gotta fund it. I mean, you can't, you can't allow, it's the proverbial.
Chicken or egg?
No, when you dig your hole deeper, someday you gotta start filling up the hole or, or you don't get it.
That, that's my question. What are we, what are we discussing? Everybody thinks, I mean, we, everybody thinks it should be higher, right?
Contribution in the fund, then how much is gonna be, you know, is the county gonna cover it all, or? There's gotta be more contribution, in my opinion, there's gotta be more contribution in the fund. Or
Well, it's not you.
You get to the point that they, you, you reduce your expenditures, which has been, that's been tried, but it's, you still, you gotta get your contributions to the point. where it covers expenditure.
Yeah, we're kind of, when we're doing this, we're looking kind of a year and a half in advance, like where are we gonna end up a year and a half from now? Because that's what we're basically deciding. It's, it's hard, but you wanna make sure that whatever we do now will cover that and still leave us with a fund balance.
Hotline, where does the money come from?
Taxes. It's taxes, market taxes, ABTs, road use tax.
So, what is that, what are you not saying? Are you, are you not, not saying that we need to raise taxes, or what? I mean, we can't raise taxes.
I don't know.
So, one of the pieces that hasn't, hasn't touched on yet in the explanation, who might be missing. Amber would be aware of it from her previous time stuff, but in our department budgets, the contribution for health insurance typically paid out of general supplemental, except with secondary rolls or EMS, those are in their own funds.
Yeah, so Howard, if you look at the budget and you look at the, the row that says health insurance, that health insurance amount is going into that, yes, into that pool for self-insurance.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna tell you. I understand, yep.
It's, it's a lot.
After you go through the whole procedure.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, Kyle.
No, you're fine. I just figured that was one piece of the equation. All of us that know what it entails know that, but that's probably not a piece that you'd heard yet.
Amber, if we could get to that three million.
Yeah, I don't want to hear what we're gonna say. I don't, I know, I know it's bad, but I was.
Somewhere between, and, and I was just trying to do rough math, but it's gonna be somewhere between twenty-six and twenty-eight percent increase.
Yeah, I figured it was a lot.
We were at three million though, previous to the, not this fiscal year, but the year before, weren't we?
We ended twenty we ended twenty-two, twenty-three with a auditor's balance of three million two hundred fifty-six thousand, two hundred forty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. So.
Which was a nice balance.
Is that it? What was twenty-three, twenty-four, if you don't remember?
We ended two million six hundred eleven thousand, which was the beginning balance.
Did we, did we change?
Those, the percentage increase between those two.
We changed the stop loss this last year.
So, that cost us more money?
No, no, that's.
Or, or I mean, it saved a lot?
It.
In our.
Our bal, our balance is lower currently than what it is, what it was to begin with at the beginning of this fiscal year.
So, it dropped our, here's our individual stop loss fees, those were ramping up, and then when we changed the stop balance, it dropped it back down just below what it was in twenty-one. But those fees declined because of our usage.
Well, I mean, I guess there's, there's no way around it. There's been, going to have to be an increase, otherwise I think our fund will be in trouble.
Yeah, and I think that's, the reason I asked Michelle, what, if we did not, if we were not self-insured and we were just paying Wellmark a bill, I've always, I've been told by other reps that the max liability is what Wellmark would be charging. Now, whether that's true or not, that isn't coming from Michelle, but that's from previous reps. So, they would be charging, if we did not have the self-funded insurance, that three million four hundred sixty-three thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars, if that was true. I don't know if it is or not. Instead of receiving somewhere in the neighborhood of two million eight hundred thousand, which is this year, for the whole year, it would be six hundred thousand dollars more.
Are you comparing the current year's claims and admins and stuff?
No, I'm just looking at what our, what our contribution is this year, what our budgeted contribution was compared to. Just saying that, if that, if we're just paying for the self, if we're paying for he, health insurance and not having self-insurance, I think it would be probably about six hundred thousand more.
Were you doing the current year's max liability, or they're three point four six million from this proposal?
I am looking at the initial rates, so it's two different fiscal years.
Okay.
But I would hope that the board isn't going to reduce contributions to the fund. You, you would at least.
That'd be impossible to reduce.
I did not say that.
Cause you, if you were going, so you're gonna, you're gonna at least use the same, I would certainly hold.
I, I think it's, are you gonna have to hold on?
Well, I don't think we're gonna go to that three million that you're saying.
Well, no, but, but no, I, I agree.
To move in the right direction, we're gonna see.
To feel safe, that would be a good fund balance, to feel safe always. So, you know, even though we're not gonna get there, maybe if, maybe we can creep back up that way. I mean, I know it'd be way too much. I, I knew that before I said it, but, you know, creep back up that way to protect that for years to come.
Do you have the rates we contributed prior to last year in front of you? I know there's, you got the years on the, like the rates.
Our contributions in.
For the previous fiscal year. I know now we're at eight forty-five.
Twenty-four?
Yep, we're at eight forty-five and eighteen twenty-five.
In twenty-three, twenty-four, we had seven hundred sixty-five dollars for single and one thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars for fam.
So, I was thinking that was a, I was trying to remember what that percentage was.
That was a four percent increase over the previous year.
Not for single. That's a little over a ten percent increase for.
Yeah, it, four percent over the previous fiscal year. We increased it last year ten percent.
Okay, that's, yeah.
You, you asked what it was for, I guess I'm, I misunderstood, but over the previous year represented four percent. This year that we're in right now, we increased ten percent.
Okay, yep. So, it's not like we were reducing anything last year, whatever. We did a ten percent increase.
That is correct.
You can talk, correctly, please. You can talk all you want about building a fund, but if three more people max, max out, it goes down.
Correct.
Potentially, yep.
I, I understand. You don't subject a, an average or expected or whatever. You gotta, you gotta start with a number, but
and we have, we have a gross maximum too, that, that's seventy-five thousand per, and.
Yeah, that's that three million four hundred sixty-three, in my understanding, that's the max on liability to the fund.
That includes all the premiums and all the stop loss and all the, stop loss and self-insurance is the same thing, right?
That would be, well, reinsurance or whatever you wanna call it. After the employee has this much, then another, another person is paying, another entity is paying.
So, theoretically. I, I have a little problem wrapping my head around, you know, we have a balance of, of, call it two and a half million dollars. And, and what will go into that? Well, that's, and that's in the middle of the year. We, we would, we might even hope it's that at the end of the year, right?
That would be good, yes.
Yes, okay. So, then what will go into that balance the following year? I mean.
Well, everybody will continue to contribute. Every month, the fund has revenue and every month the fund has expenses and it's, it's balanced out. And that is part of that top, top table. It, it starts, started in July with the, the two million six hundred eleven thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars. We had a revenue of two hundred twenty-one thousand four hundred forty-three, which is.
Why does that revenue change from month to month?
There is interest. This, this balance is in interest and there's difference in, uh, employment. We had, we had a big shift this year, uh, almost employees' choices for, for the health insurance. But then there's expenditures as well, which again are from Wellmark based on usage, and then we get our ending balance throughout there.
Me being the oldest person in the room and the most li, biggest liability theoretically. My wife and I have catastrophic accidents, could blow things right out of the water.
Anybody.
Yeah, anybody.
I mean, we've had situations with.
Accidents or accidents.
Automobile accident. We've had. Yeah, everyone was healthy. It makes, it makes it a lot easier. We've, we've taken, unfortunately, we've had some situations this year and the past couple of years.
Well, anything else that I have one to touch on or questions to?
No.
Pardon me?
Oh, he was asking if we had any questions and I said not at the moment, so.
No. Well, would you, what would you like to use for budget figures?
Last year, it was ten percent increase.
Last year, we did a ten percent increase.
That's only about fifteen, about fifteen thousand more a month. Family, I was only figuring family. It'll change for family.
If you do that, you are you thinking using that as a starting point, figure out what our revenue's gonna be from there?
That's what I was thinking.
So, that'd bring it to roughly nine thirty. And that, nine thirty times forty-three is forty-nine nine nine zero, so that's right at forty thousand then. Do you wanna do a ten percent increase on the total contribution for family, or ten percent on what we contribute?
I was just thinking what we contribute.
So, then eighteen twenty-five. One is two thousand ten.
I don't know if it gets us there, but maybe it'll be something to start with.
One sixty-six. Yeah, that'd be two hundred and seven, almost two hundred and seven a month. Well, hold on, I would.
I'm confused where you're getting those numbers.
I skipped a part. One eighty-seven. So, I'd get us to two twenty, two twenty-seven and a half a month revenue roughly.
Instead of seven eight, one eighty-seven eight thirty?
Yeah, I don't have.
I, I wasn't taking into consideration the revenue from what the employees give. I was just.
I did add that in my second time.
I did.
And like if we looked at December, we're at two oh five, so we'd add roughly twenty thousand a month.
Yeah, if you look at August.
Yeah, the family plan changes.
Yeah.
That'd be two point seven million in revenue. Wait, the budget. Okay, that's why those are different. Yeah, so I mean, add a little over two hundred thousand to the line that Doug has budget for estimated revenue for year FY twenty twenty-six. Yeah, you had ten percent on that, but it'd be a little heavier on the family, a little less on the single, but yeah. Get to two point seven three instead of two five zero.
I don't know if seven's gonna give us three, or.
It's not gonna give us maybe a ton, but it's a starting point and we have to do something.
Yeah, I mean, we could plan on that at the starting point. I don't know what else to do at this point in time.
And basically what she's bringing us next week, if I understand correctly, it's not gonna change that dollar amount. I mean, it might just change the way it's distributed, but it isn't going to change really much.
Unless we change the plan that actually reduces our expenses.
Which would be at a cost of change of what? Because I'm just getting confused.
You mean going full?
No, I mean, like she's, and not saying we're doing this, but I'm saying she's gonna have comparisons for their, like, standard book of business, whether it's hierarchy, double, all this other stuff, I mean.
And the co-pay, that part.
Those, those other aspects of the plans that would be different from what we currently have. So, that's a cost to weigh.
Using ten percent increase in single, so that would be nine hundred and thirty dollars per month. And fam increasing the county's contribution, uh, ten percent, I'd get two thousand two hundred and sixty dollars per month. So, your total contribution then is two million seven hundred thirty thousand eight hundred forty dollars. And what concerns me then is that you're just using these initial rates that were presented today, your expected, um, claims, the expected amount that we're gonna have is two million nine hundred forty-three dollars and five hundred, two million nine hundred forty-three thousand five hundred ninety-five, so you're not, you're not contributing enough.
We're not gaining enough. Need, need I ask what percent? Can you log in the number in your wonderful spreadsheet?
I had fifteen percent.
Um, you what?
I had fifteen percent that I felt comfortable with.
And, okay, what would that?
And that'd be the same.
Tell me what those rates are.
Yeah, please.
What's that bring us for revenue? Or, yeah, rates and revenue?
So, single is, that'd be nine hundred seventy-one seventy-five. I don't know if you wanna run it, round it to nine seventy-five?
Yeah.
Nine seventy-five?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
And if you just, our contribution, that'd be two thousand nine hundred seventy, two thousand ninety eight dollars and seventy five cents. Call that twenty one hundred plus the two fifty.
Can you say that again?
You're saying the county contribution of twenty one hundred and the employee contribution of two fifty a month would be twenty twenty five?
Twenty one hundred for the family, for the county.
For the county.
Yeah, he started out with two thousand ninety eight and then just rounded it up.
I, I thought he said two thousand nine hundred and I was really confused.
I might have said that.
Okay, so, uh, twenty one hundred for the family, county contribution two fifty for the.
I didn't know.
Then employee.
Employee contribution, okay, now I'm trying.
And I get that total contribution using the current enrollment, two million eight hundred forty three thousand seven hundred dollars.
Two million eight, what was the rest?
Two million eight hundred forty three thousand seven hundred dollars.
That's more than I get probably.
That's what a bad, a bad couple instances will do.
Well, for Tammy's aspect, I don't think she should make any changes to that effect until we say, okay, this is what we're going with. And then she can, she'll need to change it twice.
We, when Doug and I went through non-departmental, what did we plug in there, Doug, do you remember?
We really didn't put any numbers in there actively.
Okay, okay.
But I, I mean, our expected expenditures are gonna be that, right now, unless the, um, terms of our contract, right now, would be that. Two million nine hundred, uh, thousand dollar figure.
We did put expenditure in there, but it was three point five, but.
So is that using the max liability?
No.
It's just the same as, we kept it the same as what it is right now, huh?
Yeah.
We just put that in there.
I think one thing that employees want to know, and I think it's fair, it's a fair question, but. Are, is the board going to ask employees to contribute more to the health insurance?
What would you do?
Well, I think that there's some things that need to be considered. Collective bargaining units have bargained in the past with the county board supervisors. And they've always asked for health insurance and kept wage increases. They, they, um, they've accepted a lower wage because they knew they were gonna get good health insurance through it. There's different ways to look at it, if you, uh, if, if you provide enough wage to pay for health insurance, looking at that. You end up paying what goes along with wages, IFRS, FICA, um, those types of things as well. It, it's a balancing act that you gotta do. None of, none of the services that Cassou County provides are provided for without an employer. I, you know, there's an employee, whether it's walking up to pay taxes, getting a driver's license, voting, snowing. Law enforcement, conservation, employees do that with whatever. And, uh, right now, I don't know the, uh, there's a lot of discrepancy of employees. We'll just put it down in the secondary road department.
And my first thoughts going into this and from the people that I've heard from. I would hope that we can do this without raising what the employees pay. Because, uh, from what, it, it, it's a lot. And I know that we can all say, well, they can go somewhere else and they can pay more, but, yep, okay. But we still need to take care of the people that are here and rely on us to make good decisions in order to accomplish that. And, um, I am fortunate enough that I have a lot of history here to know. And I sat in on many union negotiations and I know what those employees gave up to keep that health insurance. And then I think because of knowing that and then hearing that then last year, not only did they have to give up the wage, they had to give up the health insurance. I think that's a little bit alarming and. Same, we have to make really good decisions and. Even though that's hard sometimes, I mean, I, I, I'm not necessarily saying that we can say they don't have to pay. But I don't think it should be increased one hundred percent, no. I, I mean, and I know I'm only one person, but I don't wanna see that we change that. I don't, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, and I can, I can appreciate the history and I do know, um, there were lower raises. Um, accepted by employees to keep health insurance, but we haven't been in the lower raise category. With the exception of last year, for the last couple of years. Um, and if you do a ma- the math on, um, fifteen percent increase in health insurance, um, using a family plan for the numbers for the sake of discussion. That increase comes out to thirty two eighty five in a year. And if you divide by twenty eighty hours, assuming forty hours a week, that's a dollar fifty eight per hour, just in health insurance. So, taking that into account with everything, I mean.
Was it ever proposed? I mean, obviously it wasn't, so I, I scratched that question. But, you know, in the past, it was always communicated. Okay, guys, I mean, we can't do all this, we, if we wanna keep our health insurance, we can't give these raises. And then to, I'm sorry, I say the words helter skelter, give these big increases and not to everybody, not to everybody. Uh, and then all of a sudden be like, oh yeah, sorry, that wasn't for free, you're gonna have to pay for health insurance. I just wonder if maybe people would've wanted to keep things a little more even keel so that they could have that security.
I, I think that's a fair point to some degree, but the wage scale changes that we had to make. Where it was maybe seen helter skelter on the outside, but it was based on legal opinion and that was because we weren't in compliance with the law. So our hands were kinda tied on that and even though it maybe didn't look pretty on the outside. We didn't have a whole lot of choice in that category, so.
I mean, I, and I still think that's a matter of opinion, which I'm not gonna argue that, but I'm just saying. They got raised, but now as we take stuff away, did they? You know, it seems like it came for a co- at a cost, is what I'm, I'm getting at. And, yeah. I don't, like I said, I, I, my history probably is what gives me the stronger opinion on this. If I was just walking in, and then I, I, I wouldn't have that opinion, but my history gives me that opinion and. And, uh, we have some very, very long-term employees here and we're fortunate for that. That experience is priceless and, you know. So I think to be safe, it sounds like fifteen percent is that number at this time.
Yeah, I mean.
Hard to argue that.
Yeah, at this time, I think I was saying.
And even then, you know, that's just what's projected to be safe.
Yeah.
It is.
You gotta look at.
Could make leaps and bounds or you could, yeah.
This is, uh, you know, I don't know what percent of, of the budget that we are looking at. You know, you gotta, when it comes down to everything, you gotta look at the total budget and see how that affects everything.
You sit here and you're afraid to say anything, uh, cause it's, especially when you don't know what you're talking about. There's no, I agree a hundred percent, but, you know, experience, you know, the institutional experience, you know, with long employees. But when that person does leave, retire or whatever, the new person comes in, is making the same, I'm talking about myself, not making the, you know. You, you're making the same as the person that left and the person that left didn't take your time answering stupid questions. And this, but the same is true when somebody retires from. If, you know, if, if you were to retire, uh, or at twenty years from now when you retire.
I won't be here that long.
You know, or, you know, Doug, or Doug's not elected, but you know, the, the new person's gonna come in and, and cost just as much. But you don't get paid for institutional, uh, experience or wisdom or.
Well, and you have the same responsibilities.
Yeah.
Even, even though you're walking in with.
Even though you've been playing ignorant for a while.
Fourteen, fourteen days worth of experience or whatever, I mean, you're, you're still elected.
Yeah.
In that position to be responsible for the same things.
We're not gonna solve the world's problems, but when medical inflation is six, I'm making this up, six percent of general inflation is three percent. Something's gonna have to give somewhere eventually, uh, and I don't even know what that is, it just, it just the numbers, the divergence between the two.
Yeah.
And of course, we've, we've been talking about that for thirty years.
It's been a national, national subject, it's not.
Yeah, I.
Cassou County, it's a national.
I know, I know, I know.
National subject for a long time, so. And I don't know if there, I don't, I haven't heard of another solution. There's no, there's not a, you know, my father, your, your parents fight to do the very same thing. There's not, money doesn't grow on trees.
I wish it did, cause I don't quite agree.
You know, there's just no, so you, you budget and you try to be, one thing to remember.
It would be worse.
Even, even you budget that money and you don't necessarily have those claims, the money stays in the fund. It isn't like.
Yeah, I know.
The money's going to.
Right.
A third party.
I was gonna say that twenty minutes ago, you know, e- e- even if something good happened and the, and the fund went up, it's not like we, we can't ever get it back. You know, you just, you could get it lower back.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, yeah.
And that's has happened.
Yeah.
Has, yes.
So.
I. I'm a big, you know, s- s- you're keep, so you're keeping track of this fund and it, it's a theoretical number, but we don't, the money isn't literally sitting there. You know, we talked about all these, all these departments, you know, okay, you budgeted twelve hundred dollars for office supplies and you only used six hundred. Well, you don't get to carry the six hundred over to next year, you start all over again and this.
This, this does, yeah, yes, 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 this does stay.
This does, this is there. This one's different.
Yeah, yeah.
It is solely just for that, so if we have a good year, which it's a great thing if we have a good year, it, next year we could be having a. Different conversation and that's okay.
Yeah, if I talk about my perfect world, in my perfect world, it'd be true of every fund, you know, you, you, okay, yeah, we think that's fair for a yearly expenditure. If you keep it low, you know, you'll have more there for the next year, but that's my perfect world again.
In a perfect world, we wouldn't need law enforcement, cause everyone would obey every rule.
Nobody gets.
No one would get injured, no one would have any kind of health in a perfect world, but we're not in a perfect world.
Well, so.
I know that, I know.
Bottom line is, I guess, and last thing I'm gonna say is, you know, we're, and I'm saying it, cause I have the history. We've been blessed with very, very loyal employees and I think our loyalty should match that and at least do our darn best. To keep it status quo for them this year as to what they pay and. Cause obviously i- in a perfect world, we could reduce that number, but we can't. So, do the best that we can to, to keep it there for them.
Carter, do you have any input on the fifteen percent increase?
You know, I don't have all the same numbers in front of me that you guys do, but, uh, I'm following along, fine for today's purposes, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, I think for sake of time, I think we, uh, agree that fifteen percent, putting that in, uh, for numbers now.
Now we have the fund balance numbers that you were talking about or chemical or some of that.
Yeah. Um, we can.
So I was just doing the numbers, I mean, I'm.
Did you ever get some preliminary numbers from Roger for the salaries?
I did, I, and I printed them off, I think.
Oh, did you? I just did.
Yeah, you just put them in your books, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I did and put those, those are out and the only ones that I don't have would be ambulance, which would just be the ARPA. Conservation, I just got this morning, so I put those in this morning, um.
So it's pretty up to date, like we have most everything in there.
Yeah, yeah, except for self-insurance revenue.
Yeah.
Of course, but that's six, fund sixty six thousand, so that's, um, otherwise, I think eight nine one one, but that's its own fund. Otherwise, I think everything else should be pretty much in there. So, let's see. I'll send the funds to you one at a time. And the first one will be general basic.
Are you just nailing up to?
Yeah, if that's okay.
Yeah.
You guys care if I take a quick restroom break?
No, you're not allowed.
Okay, fine, better more than wait.
Actually, I can go, I'm gonna try to send them to you all at the same time.
It's about three hundred and forty thousand for health insurance increase.
An increase?
Yeah, for fifteen percent. Restroom break does sound good.
What else do you want, besides just general basic, general sup and rural?
Probably good for now.
Okay, then I'm gonna go to the bathroom. I sent them to you too, Doug.
Oh, thank you.
I got an email from, not a classmate, but a former schoolmate, asking about. Forward it to you, if you tell me how.
I'll show you how.
Well, I know how to forward emails, but yeah, I have my address, I mean.
I think that if you start typing this.
Engineer or D. Miller, at the same, either one of those.
Yeah, if you type Doug, it'll pop up.
It's magic, and then based on what I've done.
No, it's, well, it's all, it's all in our address book for the.
I don't wanna forward that one anyway, so let's, let's quit that.
Yeah, don't forward the one that tells, tells you how bad a person is, please.
If you're looking at general supplemental, when you get to general supplemental, um, the levy currently is a dollar sixty, and there is a dollar seventy. Cause when I put in a dollar sixty, I thought it looked a little bit low, so it's at a dollar seventy, of course, you guys will change it to whatever you want, I just wanted you to see.
And that's for general supplement.
General supplemental.
And what are you getting now?
A dollar sixty.
Okay.
Yeah, cause that's.
Yeah, that's low too, but I like dollar seventy better than a dollar sixty.
Go do that.
D. Miller.
Is there space?
Nope.
The other levies, general basic is, rural basic are at the statutory max, we can't go any higher.
Right, the gen, on general basic and rural basic.
I'm gonna start over.
Okay.
But the, the state tells us what our statutory max is, we're below three fifty now, because we grew too much.
So Doug.
Forward.
Rural basic transfers out three point five million.
Cause just go up here to the two line.
So that's like a million full platoon sales tax.
Yep, so if you look in your non-departmental.
Yeah.
It should be in there, what those amounts are.
No, that was.
Every bill looks like here.
Sometimes. So now it's going to be, now if you just hit send.
I wanted to, these two that came yesterday, I can do the same thing. Okay, now I gotta get forward again.
Charles Houston.
So it's actually, the three point five is the well mark, self-insurance.
Chuck graduated in seventy-six.
I shared it with him, I said eighty-eight, and I, I'm not sure when.
That came out of, nevermind, that came out of.
Oh, it's his, that whole time.
That came out of sixty-six.
And I'm pretty sure I met Chuck.
Okay, so it's two point five for secondary road and one for lost.
Yeah, that's some.
Page five.
Fun things in front of me, just hilarious.
Or was the environment for that?
Um. So, let's see.
When did he go from two point nine to two point nine?
Cause that keeps, does the one where you're popping two, does he live in Dallas by the.
Secondary. I get the impression that one lives in Iowa, so.
When did what?
I know we were talking million dollar increase.
You know, he's came, I don't know how.
We went down to Dallas and.
I can't, I can't hear.
And that was, that might not have happened this Easter.
All right.
I visited, oh, Finnegan, maybe it was Finnegan, I think that we went and, uh, visited many, many years ago.
Because I know we were talking about the key answer, million dollar increase over.
That's like half a year. And that might have been a Finnegan, so.
And that's.
Dan Kees.
That's what was budgeted, so, that's what was in the budget.
He was a step brother of Steve Andreessen.
Yeah, yeah.
That's right, with my relationship with Steve Andreessen.
Are you saying it should be what?
I'd have to go back to paperwork, but. Unless, maybe walk over the budget to.
I asked something. We're back, or we're not back.
No, we're just, I mean, we're really just talking and not thinking.
Yeah, what are you looking at?
See, we're just looking at rural basic right now, yeah, rural services.
Is that the one from, from, uh.
Uh, the first one that you sent to.
No, I'm talking to Amber now, I'm sorry, you're talking about Carter's email now?
What was the, that's another question, what are we gonna use for road improvements of that million dollar loan?
Yeah, it does for me, those projects, yeah.
Right.
But, yeah.
But you know what I mean?
Yep. Got a pick project for that, yeah.
Cause.
Yeah.
That's interesting, I mean, like, there's. Hungarians from Minneapolis, Chicago.
Because we're from limitations, it could be nice.
That still travel on a certain day, revolutionary date or something like that, that they'll come to the, um, come to Cusse County, Iowa.
Hard to imagine, although it's nice.
Oh, right. And during his time, has a very, a very important cause, uh, he has. I'll read all, read all of them a little bit closer, certainly under new.
I have, I, I had my computer, I had my computer, and then it happened after that, I didn't look at it, I, I glanced, but I haven't plugged it in, or.
The road improvement.
Yeah.
Emerges and stuff.
I mean, it needs to be there, oh, not now, it would be almost there, plus this, plus that. Which, that's just one thing that's not, I mean.
To get started?
Yeah, I mean, that's variable, but, I mean, whatever two's four.
And that loan has nothing to do with any money that we give to the grant stand, that loan has nothing to do with it.
Correct. Correct.
The revenue does, not the loan.
Yeah, the, the revenue from the TIP is to pay back that loan first, but it's all in the same bucket of where we would borrow from, yeah. For the grant stand, if we do, or what we do, or what.
We're borrowing from the revenue, not from the TIP, not from the loan.
Not from that loan.
All right, are we ready to move into, can you hear?
Yeah, I mean, we can, I don't know if anyone wants to say anything to Brandon, he's scheduled at three forty-five, and it's twenty-four minutes from now.
We could probably still do them at three forty-five, or what do you think, you can?
Well, I, I know it will be done in twenty minutes.
We were scheduled them last time, I'm just saying. And his isn't mandatory anyway, cause he has his own board, so.
Well.
Brandon shouldn't take more than five or ten minutes, and then since we meet on it next Tuesday, at the conference board.
Yeah. Oh. Or maybe we see if he can pop in quick, and then we go to secondary roads, if it's quick buzz through.
Does that work for you, Doug, if we grab Brandon?
However you guys wanna do it, that's fine with me.
Are we not staying past the bar?
I would prefer not, but.
I would prefer not, cause I'm, I have to drive them, I don't do well seeing them at dark. So it's a little, I mean, not, that's not your problem, but I.
No, that's fair.
I would, I would appreciate maybe if we could be done at four. I mean, I, I.
And what do you, what do you guys think, schedule wise then, I mean, do we try and do something? Again on Friday and have more time for. Secondary roads or what, because I don't think we can fit that conversation in the rest of today, I mean, we can start on it, but.
Probably not, this is a big budget, I mean.
I mean, yeah, there's a lot.
Cause we've been through transfer station, right?
Yeah, we were, yeah.
I don't know if you, you're, I'm supposed to be meeting somebody from Sunday here at nine o'clock Friday.
I'm not in the, I'm in the, out of the office tomorrow, Thursday, Friday.
Well.
How about next Monday or?
What's, what's our agenda look like on Tuesday, I know we're doing self-insurance.
We don't.
But we've already kind of made a pretty big dis, I shouldn't say decision, not really a decision, we've already made a great stride with that, so, I mean.
We just have the solar ordinance and the animal ordinance and liquor license.
So why don't, Doug, are you gonna be here Tuesday, so that you're not cut short, I mean, obviously yours is.
Oh, yeah. I'm here Monday, I'm here all next week.
A big budget, that's.
No, we could, well, we could just do that next week, but then we're already, I mean.
Well, yeah, but.
We got one more week in January after that, so.
I know, but I feel, I kinda feel like we've done good.
I think we have, we have got a lot done.
We've got a lot done, we don't have a lot to revisit, unless other people have more to revisit than what I might have jotted down, I mean, I. I think we're doing pretty good. Cause if we get that self-insurance piece of the puzzle kind of knocked out, that really helps us know.
Brandon's come.
Where we're at, um. We wanna obviously get as much done as possible next week, because the team is gone that following Tuesday.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we can plan on that and do secondary roads next week. If that works for you, Doug.
I have a little more of wishes.
It's fine by me.
All right, I'm gonna shut all my stuff down here quick. Didn't make you visit, Brian.
How's it going?
Good, how are you guys?
Good.
Good.
I think we're ready whenever you are.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I guess, is there any questions on the budget?
I haven't looked at it until just right now.
Okay, um, I guess for the, the two new people that, um, might not be aware, um, my budget is approved by the conference board, so you guys are only, uh, one, the supervisors are only one-third of that vote, so. Um, the mayors of all the cities are one-third to vote, and then the school board is another third, so, um.
So you already met once to put all these numbers in, or this is the numbers you're putting in, and then the next meeting is when it's talking about?
Yeah, yeah, so next Tuesday, I'm gonna present the numbers to the whole entire conference board, um, and then we will have to schedule, um, a budget hearing, uh, after that at a later date, so.
And just so you know, Carter is on the team's meeting here, so.
Okay, perfect, yeah, so everybody should have got Carter's email last night for the, for the, um, meeting next Tuesday, so.
That's a good question for Brandon.
So is there not going to be a deputy?
Um, as I prepared the budget, no. So, um, we are not required to have a deputy, the deputy, um, is, falls into the category of what we're in the, with the situation right now of not having a necesser. The chief deputy steps in, if there is no chief deputy, then, uh, the auditor takes over, so.
That's why there's a chief deputy. Cause the auditor said.
Cur- currently, right now, there is, there is nobody in our office that, um, you know, has, has taken the deputy test, nor is there anybody on the state's list for deputies that we could even hire from. I mean, you would, you would be pulling a, a deputy from another county if, if anything, so.
So just curi, out of curiosity, the clerks, are they falling into line of that scale, that wage scale, that? We're supposed to be fair on?
So, I have it broke down, and I'll show you guys next week, um, on Tuesday, how that's figured.
Okay, are, is, is, I'm just asking ahead of time, or is it trying to be in line with that scale?
Yes, correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have more than one individual, or propose to have more than one individual under the same job description? Or would they be separate job descriptions?
Separate, so, so Nancy would be promoted to an office manager, so she currently is at a class right now, if she passes that tech, or that class, uh, she would be, actually be eligible to take the deputy test. Or the assessor test, either or, you could take either or, but, um, I don't know if that's her intentions, um, that's why I, I prepared the budget to promote her to office manager, uh, she's been with the office. Uh, I believe fourteen or fifteen years, you know, she's very knowledgeable, so.
And then what other positions would you have under that field?
So then we have Scott that I hired recently in October, he's our field appraiser, and then I would need to, I have in the budget to hire a new clerk, so they would start July first. So that would be someone that would kind of work underneath Nancy, Nancy would, uh, you know, help train that individual while I'm still training Scott. So, as far as the budget looks, the total salary I figured is, is, is decreased five percent. So it looks, it looks deceiving on this paper, but it's, if, if.
Because of no deputy.
Cause of the no deputy, yeah, yeah, but our, our, our salary is down five percent, so, as I punch these numbers into the department of management, our total budget, um, last year, our levy rate was twenty-six cents. Well, point two-six-nine-eight-four, and this year it's point two-five-eight-one-two, so it's decreased a whole cent. So I, I, um, just kind of ran some preliminary calculations, so if you're looking at it in tax dollars. The taxes, the taxes stay the same for our budget, just the assessor, cause we're a separate one, and here, you can pass it on my example, that is based on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house in Algonah, which is the typical house in Algonah. Um, that's what I'm basing it off of, so obviously it can fluctuate a little bit, depending on if someone maybe built something new or whatever, but if the values stay the same, you know, their, their taxes are relatively in line with what they were last year.
Any other, like, pro- Any other like projects or anything you got in mind, I mean, we got the mapping, which is pretty typical, but anything outside the ordinary?
No, we s- we still have um a project that got approved two years ago, uh that we're setting aside in our reserve fund balance, uh we put fifty thousand dollars in there. Um, that project's scheduled to be done in twenty twenty-nine, and it's about a three hundred thousand dollar project. Um, it doesn't show that on your sheet, um it's already been approved and it already goes just right into the fund balance, so.
And yeah, as I guess, as it was talked about previously, we'll 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 review all this in the conference board meeting. You have any other questions?
Well, mine is that health insurance number change?
Yeah, um.
Maybe we should have him plug something different in.
Yeah, um, just in our kind of conversations today about health insurance, we are expecting a fifteen percent increase.
Okay.
Um, so you'll, you probably would wanna plug that in before um.
So that's, I can give.
Is is that something that you're gonna email out?
No, because they haven't decided for sure yet at the show.
Okay. Oh, okay.
You're obviously unique, cause you're meeting next week, so.
Yeah.
And and mine's all still preliminary as well, but yeah, if I could, you know, if. Um, so like I plugged in, uh eight forty-five for single and eighteen twenty-five for family.
Here, this is the new.
Of course. The, you have the new amounts, perfect. And then dental, dental still the same?
Yeah, that's still the same.
Okay.
Or the one I gave you before, it changed from last year, but it's the same.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, nine seventy-five and twenty-one hundred.
Perfect. Awesome, yeah, I can get that updated.
Brandon, Brandon, correct me if I'm wrong, but um we're not deciding on your budget next Tuesday. You're just presenting it to the conference board to decide sometime in February, correct?
Yes, correct, it's just an informational meeting only, um because we have to publish in the paper when we're doing our budget hearing.
Oh, yeah.
And there's a, I gotta look at the code, but I think it's like twenty days, we gotta give so much of a notice.
Not more than twenty, not less than ten.
Yeah, yeah, so.
You'd rather have them have a higher amount than a lower amount, no, and then go with them and, I mean, odds.
Yeah. It'll always come back down.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so what, the one, you know, we previously had four families, and now with my new hire, he's a single, so that's why that changed a little bit on that line item, but um I I'm assuming my if my my new hire would need a family, I, you don't, you just don't know until that person's hired, so. Any other questions for me?
Um, right now.
Cool.
All right, thanks for the time.
Would it be possible just to visit a little bit about the letting this morning?
Yeah, sure.
Um, as far as that open cut, if board would prefer to do an open cut there, I have, I mean, you can do that. But I think that you need to also be aware that it is going to take some extra money.
Down the road, right?
It's, pardon me.
Down the road.
Correct, in the future, and uh in my my opinion, that be there for a hundred years and no one's going to have to work on that road department uh over the next hundred years.
Right, doing those pipes.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's, that's up to you guys, I know if you drive west out of Titanca, you'll see where there's um an area there, and I think south of Titanca too, that was recently resurfaced, you could feel that, uh the area where it was open cut, so. And I can certainly get ahold of Tyler if you, if the board desires to do that.
I just leave that.
Now, we already made the decision.
Yeah, the decision's already been made.
Okay.
Personally, it's like, I mean, with my opinion, I'm not talking for anybody else, I was taking your recommendation on that one.
Thank you.
And and uh you know, laptops are usually higher, and you know, the cuts deeper, and so it's longer, and I mean, I know they went through a gravel road that I had traveled. Finally came in, you know, a load of rock, and that, so proud that that was really shallow, uh too.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thanks.
This is probably a loaded question, but what's the extra, uh the general supplemental? And I know maybe you can't answer off the top of my head for expenditures, in twenty-three, twenty-four, we had two point three million, twenty-four, twenty-five, three point one million.
We did move some extra stuff, didn't we, to general supplemental this last year?
Some insurance, I'm pretty sure we moved.
Yeah.
Yep.
Insurance that was on general basic.
That would be my guess.
The, the, the ICAP stuff?
I think it was ICAP was the big piece, yeah, and that's six hundred thousand dollars. So, that plus the rest of our increases would probably explain it, right Doug? So this general supplemental, you've got a, did you say a dollar seventy?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, there's, there's room there, I just I didn't wanna do much, I mean, I didn't wanna do much playing there without input from you guys, that's just.
Not much. Yeah, that's. Are we to a point where we can generate those like notices or whatever for, that'll be mailed out for a total tax increase and what that percentage breaks down to and all that sort of stuff?
For a minute, what are you looking at?
I'm not till we. Uh halfway the expenditures.
Yeah.
Not until you have the dump set in stone.
So if you go to twenty-three, twenty-four, it was like two point three million, and then it went up to three point one.
Yeah.
Not till.
We can't see what our percentage increase is yet?
No, I have to put them in the D L M site.
Okay.
But you mean on the tax notice?
Yeah.
That doesn't tell the incre- that just tells the increase of that fake property. Right, it didn't show, yeah.
Yeah, that is an example property, yeah.
Yeah, so so that went, that doesn't show an increase of what our taxes are. Is that what you're meaning?
Obviously, yeah. Looks like gen- and now, this figure for general supplemental, what did you say you had in for health insurance for revenue, or is that the?
We don't have anything in for revenue for health insurance.
So we don't have any of the, like, all, in each department when you got your health insurance?
Yeah, yeah, the, ju- just the.
That's current.
What we have now, yes.
Okay, so you borrow me, this is rough math here, but I mean, we're looking at about, just on the property tax, there between twenty-five and twenty-six, we're looking at two hundred and sixty-five thousand increase, so it's right at about ten percent. Um, and the numbers I did before is that if we do a fifteen percent increase on health insurance, that'll be another three hundred, almost three hundred and forty thousand, which some of that would come out of secondary roads, and some would come out of EMS, but but a fair bit of that would come out of general supplemental.
Well, yeah, which makes that look really bad.
Yeah, so then we'll probably add another ten percent to that, so we'll probably be at twenty percent increase on general supplemental, if we're doing that. Would be my guess.
Well, I mean, if that's the case, I mean, could you go to, I, and this just, I have no idea, could you do half? Half of uh the ICAP out of general basic and half out of general supplemental, and that covers that, and then we're still at that roughly one point two or whatever that number was, uh because general supplemental can't really sustain, you know, being under a million dollars.
No, I, no way.
There's. No. So I mean, there.
I don't even like it that low, but.
I don't e- I don't either, I look at one point two million, I think, huh, that's low. Um, but we also have to, you know, once, well, once we know every single number's in, like, right? Once we know every single number's in, then that's when we can talk about maybe switching stuff around. Cause otherwise, it's too much flip flop, and then you don't remember what you did.
Yeah.
But right now, that one point two million is is out of the comfort zone. And, I mean, rural basic really is too, if you really wanted, like, up in the general basic, I thought, huh, three million, that's okay.
I was surprised with that one, honestly.
Well, if we're aiming for a twenty-five percent target for general supplemental, be one point one two million, so I mean, we would.
But.
Yeah, but still, when you're talking that low of a, I mean, I know million dollars is a lot of money, but when you're talking about getting there, you hate to.
I I don't imagine.
We are not. Until we're required to be at twenty-five percent, I say more than that.
And yeah, that'd be same for rural, I mean, twenty-five percent on that is one point four million, so we don't have much over that.
Right. But like, I don't know. How how did we, like, what, I can't quite wrap my brain around how how did we get to a three point three million dollar fund balance in rural basic, rural services basic? I mean, how did we get there?
The ending fund balance, you mean?
Yeah, and I'm looking at twenty-three, twenty-four, the ending fund balance, you know, was.
Because we were s- we were budgeting less local option sales tax than was actually coming in, so we built a substantial balance over the years when that ramped up and we weren't spending it, and then we spent, then we spent above what we were bringing in for the last couple of years.
So.
I think there was something to. I think that there is something to the equipment and stuff that was ordered but didn't come in.
That not for rural basic?
Not for rural, that that built, that rolled the fund balance over in secondary road, but not in rural.
Not for rural, that's.
Oh.
Rural, the the big thing I saw was local option sales tax came in substantially above what we projected. So that we built the fund balance because more money was coming in, we planned, and then we didn't spend it, but then recently, we spent above what we had coming in. And, I mean, you also gotta consider there a million dollar loan from this last year, that's out of the fund balance, but the money's still here, you know, so to speak.
Not really. I mean, yeah, but not really, it's gone.
Yeah, but when it, when it gets paid back by the TIF.
It's gone, it's in capital projects.
Yeah, it it's gone, we can't, we, we can't include it in anything, I mean, it's, it's gone.
Well, if we get five hundred thousand back in this year, that'll go to repay the loan.
The older loans first.
Weren't those out of rural too?
Yeah, they were, but they still have to be paid.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it has to go in order.
It's it's still coming back to the same place, so.
Well, I just feel like.
Do we have a place on here where that's budgeted?
It tied our hands.
The.
The, when that lo- when that money come from the TIF pen comes in to repay that loan, is that included in the budget?
Yeah, Buffalo Township, non, non-departmental under Buffalo Township.
For the income side of it?
Both, yeah.
But you know, when you're looking at it, and we've got, you know, a million, a million dollars to that loan, which yes, I understand, it goes to road projects, then also another million dollars local option sales tax. And then also the transfers, I mean, like, I don't wanna see us get in a point where we're cutting the fund balances down again. And then here we are, like, now what do we do, because now legislature came up with this idea, and here we are, oh, we have no money. You know, I feel like that's, I'd like to see a little bit of it rebuilt.
And I agree, especially since we know legislatures ran on property tax cuts again this last election, so we know that that's a possibility.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a hot topic this year again.
I know, and that's why I hate to see us cutting more out of those fund balances, obviously some things we just, I mean, they're, they're gonna, but that's a lot, a lot.
And I I will attempt to look back at my paperwork and stuff from last year, but I know the transfers for secondary road, when they were proposed, it was a million dollar increase, so the one point nine, I know we were talking two point nine, and I don't I don't know when that went to two point four, but that changes the picture quite a bit too, obviously, bringing it down was good, but.
Well, it's. Well, it's five hundred thousand dollars, and then, you know, what what roughly are we, I guess I could look in the courthouse, or where is that non-departmental for local option sales tax? What money are we bringing in?
Um.
Two, off the top of my head.
Um.
Yeah, I think we booked one towards secondary roads, I thought.
Yeah.
I was sure.
So.
Is that non-departmental?
It's non-departmental, yeah.
Yeah.
Non-partent revenue?
Yeah, and I, it's one point two something, I think I can remember those numbers, but there's too many numbers to remember. Um, oh, I'm wrong, it's one point three six two. So it's on page eleven.
I was gonna say, I'm a foot and twelve than you are in the paperwork here.
It's about the middle of the page.
Yeah, one point three six.
And we're already.
Cause last year, we, last year, we budgeted a slight decrease over the year before, I remember that.
We look at.
It was close to the same, but it was projected to go down a little bit, which we're likely ahead of schedule there. But now they're projecting it up to sixteen percent.
I just think there's a trend, and I think if we're going to start leaning more on this TIF and say, okay, we get this million dollars paid for, okay, so then we do another loan. I mean, if, there's a shift in the way that money is getting allocated through, for our secondary road, we have to see a shift in some of the other numbers, is my opinion.
Yeah. Well, and and kinda echo that, I would rather, in in some regards, I would rather loan out the money from rural towards the TIF where it's coming back and still being circulated internally here, than transfer it all and it's one and gone. Um, if we loan it out, we know or expect that it's coming back.
Right, but like, if we loan it out and we reduce, like, say, money that he could.
The transfers.
He, yeah, we, then we have to make sure that that's allocated where, you know, the secondary road to do those projects.
Yeah.
I mean, we can't, we can't, like, change the trend and then, and then just say, oh, yeah, we're, we're doing something else.
No, I'm just, I mean, and it's really something to keep in mind for the future, cause if we get three million dollars a year, we're either gonna have to have the money here to loan out to ourselves and build the projects and repay ourselves, or we're gonna have to go to the bond market, borrow it privately. Otherwise, we can't play the TIF.
Right, so it would be.
It it would be to our benefit to build that fund balance, backup, I I agree with you.
Yeah. Because it's, yeah, getting, I mean, one point five million is okay, but what's it gonna look like next year?
That was, that was my concern.
Well, that's. I don't know. I feel pretty good about what we've got.
You think we've got most of like the major stuff in for these balances, or is there much we're missing yet?
Yeah, but. Oh, what, what we're missing is, um.
We have, we really have.
Self-insurance, um.
Yeah.
We have the expenditures in, but not the revenue. Um, E nine one one, we don't have in. Um E nine one one, we don't have in. Um ambulance isn't in.
Which that's its own fund, so that won't affect these.
Except for their the ARPA.
ARPA, yep, which actually on the general side, I mean, our resolution was up to two hundred thousand, but if you take that off of there, we'll be at three point two, three point three. Doesn't change it a world, but it does change it.
Then we have to change insurance yet?
For all the departments?
Yeah.
Which I would say after we meet on Tuesday, you'll have a good grip on that.
Yeah, and it won't take too long to make those changes.
And we should have, I mean, next Tuesday, we should easily be able to finish with Doug.
I think so, yeah.
I know, so.
I would think so, his is just a big budget, his takes a while.
Yeah, and he has a little bit in nondepartmental too with the operating transfers and stuff, that's his stuff.
Yep, so if we do that and do him and get the health, the health insurance, we're pretty good at finalizing numbers, I would think.
I think so too, um.
Just go back over anything we wanna revisit.
Yeah, well, and it's.
Sounds like a good plan to me.
Yeah.
I keep forgetting.
Keep forgetting you're there.
I do too, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All of a sudden, all of a sudden, you appear.
I'm waiting to hear that baby and I hear no baby.
Better better just roll a little more up. He was with me all morning.
Aww.
Did he act interested at all? Lucky for most of us.
Lucky him, should've pulled out the calculator, saw the math for us.
Yeah, I I think we're doing fine.
I do, I do, I think we're doing pretty good.
That'll be better than we were, we were at last year, I think so.
What it's worth, I just totally, I don't think we're count losing a darn thing.
It's a slow process.
Three steps forward and two steps back.
Yeah, it's a.
We we really are, I and I think, we really are.
It's a slow process, Howard, and I and I understand where you're coming from, but just having numbers to look at is a big deal, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, yeah.
Having fund balances that fairly.
Do we have, well, actually, what's our total for ARPA left that we have?
For rural.
Two hundred and some, I can't remember.
Cause I know we had seventy for the liaison.
Oh, you mean after we?
That, no, that we have to spend yet, because that'll be on general basic.
Uh but I mean, do you mean after what we?
No, I mean, how much, how many bills do we have to pay yet from that money?
I think it's two hundred and some.
It's gotta be more than that, unless it's high two hundreds.
Well.
Cause I know we rounded the amounts a little bit.
Yeah, I can't remember, we looked at it, I I can't remember.
Yeah, we should look at that, because we'll need to factor that into the fund balance.
Um but seventy thousand is coming out for, that's already budgeted to come out in the sheriff's office one.
What else was there?
Um. Carissa.
Yeah, is that eighteen thousand?
I don't know if she. Yeah, budgeted hers.
Yeah, we should, we should look at that.
Something else too, but I I think most of them, except for the ambulance, have been budgeted.
Already for this current year?
No, for the coming year, it's in, I think, in these budget numbers, but we can look, Kyle, to make sure.
Yeah, we should.
I'll check that. Well. Yeah, I think that's probably enough for the day.
That's enough for today.
So what committee did I find myself on that I wasn't aware of?
All of them, all of them, right?
Well, I'm looking here, I I I have my notes and I looked at these minutes and I see I'm on three, but I got a fourth one here, which is fine, I just wanna know which one it is. And how come it's, is it with the hospital, something with the hospital?
The Board of Health.
Board of Health, is that on this list here?
No, that would've.
Um, it's a separate motion, isn't it?
No, that would've, that would've been before the whole list about them.
Yeah, yeah.
Board of Health. And who's that?
No, I'm, I'm on the Board of Health.
Oh.
What?
Oh, well, then we told them wrong.
We told them wrong?
None of us had our list in front of us, so.
Okay, Carter.
Look, we, that's, that's a legal it on the meeting, but I mean, if Howard wants that.
No, 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 no.
We just all remembered wrong.
Yeah, I see it right here, that list he sent out, it's got Carter listed.
Okay.
Well, contact the hospital and let them know, because we might've given them the wrong name today.
We did give them the wrong name.
We did, there was no might.
Yes, we did, not might've, we did.
Ask where are you looking? Where are you looking?
Uh it's, so Tammy emailed us a PDF copy of the supervisor committees.
Okay, now let me get, let me catch up with you. Date of that?
I will get that for you in just a second. The second.
Well, I was looking at the minutes that I I I looked, uh.
No, she created a a separate.
Committee appointments.
Yeah, no, I I I got to that point um the first year where I kept going, what, what committee am I on? And so I took this, the document that she emailed out and I just saved it directly on my desktop, so that way I can go straight to it.
I have another question, can you, can you, is it against the rules or is it dangerous to have these emails come to my desktop?
Your personal, if you're at home?
Yeah, that's dangerous, it sounds like.
I don't know, I like to keep everything in one spot, but Howard, that's how you manage your life, I guess.
I would.
Yeah.
Think of it this way, if there is ever a request for open record.
I've heard that, yeah, you gotta keep reminding me, but yeah.
That's why I did the separate, oh, which reminds me, Tammy, I gotta talk to you about that.
Oh, yeah.
Um.
Weekend adjourn here soon.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Sorry.
Okay.
We're just kinda, kinda.
I would just ask if you need to.
Our.
Sticker and Garmin.
Our vice chair was not keeping the meeting orderly, geez, we need some practice.
I almost lost already.
All right, well, we have a motion and a second for adjournment, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Say nay.
Motion, we are adjourned at three fifty nine, see, I was trying to get to the four.